Just so I'm clear, Jen, there's a different Zoom password for this meeting for the Board of Trustees. The same one?
Yes, you just have to open the...
I don't know why I got two texts from people saying they couldn't log in. So, okay.
There's 14 people here on Zoom.
Okay, so is there a motion to open our regular Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021? Trustee Sullivan, raise your hand. Second trustee, Patino, all in favor?
Soon we forget.
Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? So our first, by the way, again, the information on how to log on from Zoom or from the phone is in the agenda and you should follow those directions. So our first presentation is on implicit bias and it's on Leaders 2C. And there's someone here, oh, they're gonna do it virtually, is that what's happening?
Yes.
So Mayor, if I can just introduce the topic. Before I arrived here in Dobbs Ferry, the managers and administrators of the Hudson River and Valley villages had been discussing about an implicit bias program for pro-diversity. They'd already had a seminar with this particular presenter. They were very happy with the results and so we've continued to have discussions amongst the five communities to see if we could put together a program that would provide training for all employees of all municipalities. We thought it would be a great benefit because, of course, everybody interfaces. A lot of people know each other. So we would have a pool ultimately of about 600 or 700 educated employees that would have had the same opportunity, the same experience and training. So that's sort of what we've been working on. So tonight, we have the presenters here to share their program with you and take comments or questions and then we can discuss further what your disposition is. And that is Ron Carley and his associate, Ms. Orr. So Ron, turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you so very much. Make sure I'm not muted. I am not. Mr. Mayor and members of the Trust, Board of Trustees, very happy to be with you tonight and to share with you the proposal that we've been discussing with the villages in your community. We started this work last year and what we're trying to do is develop some shared understandings around fairness and equity. This year, I have partnered with my very longtime colleague Cheryl Orr, who joins us tonight from Dallas, Texas. Cheryl?
Hi there. How are you all? Just want to make sure you can hear me.
We can hear you guys.
Great. So I am Cheryl Orr. I can't see myself, so I'm just making sure that you all can hear. And I have had a long career in local government, in the human resource field. Thank you. And about two years ago, retired and began consulting. I have two affiliations. One is my own consulting firm, which is HR consulting firm. And the second is affiliation with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. They have a consulting arm called the Institute for Excellence in Public Service. For this particular endeavor, I'm going to be working with Ron. We've worked several times now and found both that our compassion for this subject is equal. And so we are working together and doing very well. One of the things I want to let you know is that I'm currently working on my dissertation and my subject is gender discrimination in the workplace. So my whole focus, my entire career, has been on the workplace. So, Ron?
Thank you, Cheryl. As you know from my bio, I am an assistant professor at Old Dominion University, an urban public university in Norfolk, Virginia, serving a diverse student population.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but we do have your bio and we are kind of restricted. So if you could just get into the, you know, what would you offer to us and our staff?
Certainly. But what Cheryl and I do together is targeted specifically to local governments. We understand the wide range of services provided and the environment within which you work. Cheryl?
So as you all know, this field, if you will, has evolved. It really started with the affirmative action fields, the civil rights movement, and has actually evolved to EEO, which most of us are familiar with and from a whole array. And then moved into, the initial was diversity. And then the next piece of this journey was inclusion. And then just recently, there's been an addition called equity that they put. So the whole thinking is around diversity, equity, inclusion, which really talks about how do we make sure that employees who are different from the mainstream employee, if you will, feel like they belong? And it's not, difference is a whole array. It can start with race, but certainly age, gender, religion, all kinds of things. We want to make sure that all those folks who come to your workplace feel like they belong. And this is, how does that happen? That's what this workshop is going to talk about.
In the workshops last summer, I asked the participants to share their values at the beginning of each workshop. On this slide, you see a word cloud created from the responses from the people from the villages last year. Our workshop is titled "Leading with Values." It's based on the premise that most people want to be fair and honest. The workshop is designed to expose participants to tools and concepts that help them live by their values.
So there are six modules in this particular workshop. Ron and I, it's actually Ron's workshop and I've come in and sort of absorbed them and gave them my feedback. And then we came up with this. So first one is Systems 1 and 2 Thinking, and Ron will talk about that. Let me just go back really quick. Yeah, just really quick. And implicit bias and stereotypes, racial history of the US, microaggressions and macroaggressions, personal action for inclusion, and organizational action for inclusion. This particular slide really says, we're going to ask the participants, can we talk? And sort of, it's the ground rules that we want our participants to work with. We want them to listen with respect. We want them to seek first to understand. We do not expect perfection, but we assume goodwill in our workshops. We use I-language rather than you-language and we use affirming language as we go through our workshop.
Our starting point is a little different than many workshops of this nature. We don't jump right in on complex issues of racism and privilege. Most people do not think that they are biased and they do not want to be biased. Calling someone biased or racist would inevitably create defensiveness and conflict. Therefore, we start at a different place with the concept of critical thinking, using the work of Dr. Daniel Kahneman, to help people understand that to be biased is to be human. If we substitute the word preference for bias, we all immediately know that there are things that we like and we don't like. These preferences emerge over time and become part of our unconscious minds. Most of our preferences are benign. There are mental shortcuts for us and there's a range of different ones created by the brain's ability to organize, categorize, and make associations. Mental shortcuts deploy automatically and are essential for our functioning. Our conscious-unconscious mind can also lead us astray in different ways, known as cognitive fallacies or biases. And you can see some of them that have been researched on the left side of this slide. Dr. Kahneman specifically examines these fallacies in the context of people making flawed economic decisions.
So this is where we really begin to talk about what are these implicit or unconscious biases that people are talking about? And we help participants understand where those unconscious biases come from and also talk about conscious biases and the implications of that. They come from stereotypes in terms of where people have grown up and what they've seen and heard in their homes out to their workplaces. So again, unconscious bias, this particular picture really talks about the array of folks, if you will, that are in our workplace. We are already a very diverse workplace. And anything can be, there can be an implicit bias on any one of the things, if you will. And this should have an et cetera, because there are many, many things that people can carry unconscious or implicit biases around.
To understand where we are, it's important to know where we've been. And so we very briefly take an examination of three eras in our history: slavery, Jim Crowe's segregation, and the modern era of mass incarceration. We do this looking specifically at African-Americans in our country, but the same could and should be done for Native Americans, people with Latinx or Asian backgrounds, women, and the histories of different European immigrants, immigrants, which are especially rich in New York. Each of these groups and others have faced government-sanctioned discrimination at different times and in different ways during our history. In the limited time in the workshop, we focus on African-Americans to help inform the discussion growing out of the death of George Floyd and other cases that have raised concern about the extent of racial discrimination in our society. It's important to recognize that this has only been since the Civil Rights Act of 1964 did it become unambiguously illegal to discriminate against African-Americans. In a historical context, this protection has only existed for about 15% of our history. Only about 15% of our history. And thus, it is no wonder that we are still working to come to grips with where we have been to create a future that takes us a place consistent with our values.
Another area in the field of DEI is this concept called microaggressions. And so it's important to know our history and because of our history, there have been not only individual but collective unconscious biases that have occurred. So knowing that these unconscious biases exist enables us to control them with conscious thinking. And again, Ron's going to talk about that in particular. But what we want to make sure is people understand what these microaggressions are. And we've kind of given you some definitions, but we really do drill down in terms of how microaggressions can inhibit the belonging state that we talked about earlier in this workshop, excuse me, in this presentation.
We include our workshop looking into areas. First is the personal area. We give people an opportunity to look at where they are and where they want to be. We see this workshop as foundational and only one step on a journey to be the kind of people that we want to be. Participants reflect on their next steps, which includes deeper self-awareness about what creates the unique worldview that each of us has.
And it is important that we go from the individual look in terms of an action plan to the organizational action plan, if you will. So we actually help participants think about, most organizations now have values. How do you actually operationalize those values and create an organizational action plan that really helps us move forward in what we call this DEI journey? We're going to strive to make the workshop a meaningful step in the journey towards having an effective workplace where people belong.
So we would be now...
Go ahead.
So we would now be happy to take any questions that you might have.
So I know you say there are six modules. How long is the whole workshop?
Yeah, it's a one-day workshop. We basically start at 8:30 in the morning, 3:00, 3:30 in the afternoon.
And is it in person? Will you actually have someone here live?
Well, that's the exciting part this year. Last year, we did virtual. This year, we're proposing to be right there in your villages. I have done these workshops in both ways and it is a significantly enhanced experience. We can do face-to-face and it's also a much better venue as well.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. I hear a lot that you explain about the workplace. And I am the liaison to the Diversity Committee and I have been exposed to a lot of information that not only involve the body of our village in terms of our staff, but we are looking to pour that diversity education upside. Will your training include education to our staff in how to actually handle things like that? Like when, for example, we receive an email of somebody complaining because something went out in Spanish? Where we can educate the community that some of those behavior could be considered as racist? So those are the kind of things that me personally, as the liaison and representing the Diversity Committee, feel that our community needs to be educated on.
Ron, you can start and I'll also comment.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question, because that hits a very critical part of what we're trying to do. We want to create organizations where people feel a sense of inclusion and belonging. And in a public sector, a local government context, we also want people to think in terms of their interface with the public that they serve. How do we better equip ourselves to be culturally competent to deal with the diversity in our community? How do we work to create our organizations in a way that they're more reflective of the people in our community? And so that connection between the public servant and the public is critical in all of this work that we're doing. We want people to begin thinking about all of their external work, policy, services, programs, whatever they are, through an equity lens. Who benefits? Whose burden are we playing a level, are we setting a level playing field where people get what they need to succeed?
Yeah. From a workplace perspective, everything that we do in local government, and that's been my entire career, is for the citizens of the community. And so we clearly, I think our philosophy is, if you can work with each other in a respectful, value-laden way, you can treat your community in that same way. So that's how we sort of start inward and then work outward.
Thank you.
And you've done local government. Have you done local governments in New York State?
I haven't. Ron?
Well, last year, my summer, virtually, I did about 80 people across the six villages in a virtual format. I've done all six of the ICMA workshops in 2019 and Cheryl and I did five virtual ICMA workshops this past spring, which is all local government. We just completed a session for a town of Holly Springs in North Carolina. I've also done a number of other communities, including Alexandria, Virginia, New Bern, North Carolina. Local government's what we do. That is our specialty. That is the niche of what we're doing together.
That's my only customer, if you will, because I know it, I love it. I spent my entire career there. So government. Now, in terms of New York, no, but if you tell me there's something different about New Yorkers, I'll listen to you.
We talk a lot faster. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, we do have two people in attendees with their hands raised.
Oh, to presentation, so, okay.
Shari, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Shari Rosen Asher and I am part of the Human Rights and Diversity Committee for Dobbs Ferry. So this is DEI training is something that we put a lot of time and effort into looking at different organizations that do this. And we did put together an eight-point kind of rubric, if you will, to determine. So one of the things that I would like to ask you is, you know, one day of training is, I also work in local government. I work for the county and I have been part of diversity training sessions in every job I've ever had for the last 30 years. But doing one day, even if it's eight to six, even if it's eight to eight, that isn't really gonna do anything, because obviously the people who are most open to it are going to walk out of there thinking, oh, this is great. And they're probably doing it anyway. And the people who are most reluctant will just be like, that was a waste of a day. So I want to ask about what your follow-up is to that, what your availability is for specific questions. I mean, Mara talked about one, you know, if we do get some questions or concerns from the public, you know, are there opportunities for you to do things for citizens? Are there opportunities for you to try to talk to what the school district is doing and try to unite, you know, with them and bringing in the other constituents, if you will, of the village besides just the employees of the village?
Well, what I would say is, there's a start, and Ron has started with 80 across your county, a very important level to start with. We always say that's the level you start with. This would be the second level in terms of the workforce. And my sense is, you do have other local people that can carry on the things, because ours is foundational. Ours is the beginning of the journey, we call it. And therefore, we would be glad to work with anybody else that you would want locally to continue the work that we have started. We are totally fine with that. We're fine coming back, but we also know that's a lot sometimes. And therefore, we would work with whoever you'd want to say, okay, this is what we delivered. This was foundational, you know, you can carry forward and certainly call us to, you know, for any assistance you would need. Ron, I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's really important to affirm what the speaker said. One day of training is not going to make all of us, you know, fully aware of what we need to do. I've been on this journey very, all my life, but very intensely for the last five years. What we seek to do in the training that we do, as Cheryl just reiterated, is provide a foundation so that there's some common understanding. What we hope will happen is that's not the end, but that's actually the beginning. And that each of the villages can reflect upon where they are and where they want to be and how we can be helpful to them. I know one of the recommendations was that the village join the national network called GARE. And I would recommend that you give that very serious consideration. I think that's an important network. And to look at an array of different approaches that address where you are. Some communities want to do regular updated work on implicit bias training. Some want to drill down with particular subsets of their community where there are issues. Some local governments go in really with both feet, the hired equity, chief equity officers, and they develop an equity strategic plan. It really varies based on the community, their size, and the capability and where they want to...
So if we have an...
Assist you in getting wherever that is.
So we have a diversity committee and we have either all the members or some of the members or one of the members come down and be part of this, they could sort of learn from you how to, going forward, how to react to certain things or how to respond to certain situations, correct?
Absolutely. We would welcome them.
Right. And it's much more, that piece is the consultation piece to help them. I mean, coming into the class, they learn what everybody else learns and that we think that's really important. But also, there's just kind of sitting down and saying, where do you want to go? Whether it's individual villages or collectively, we can make recommendations as to where you need to go next. So that's the consultation that we definitely are available for. We understand that we cannot keep coming back in, that we have to transfer the knowledge and have folks continue from there. And if we need to come back periodically, we'd love that to make sure, let me say something really quick. A lot of RFPs that are out there now are asking for the consultant not only to do the training and equity plans, but is also saying, what are you going to do to follow up to make sure that we are indeed implementing these DEI strategies?
Right. Or if we wanted to raise awareness with our residents, if we wanted to have some type of a forum or a discussion, maybe, you know, and I'm not saying this for sure, but maybe reach out to you people to tell us, well, these are the kinds of groups that you should contact or this is the kind of format you should have it in.
Right.
Right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah. That's the good work and we would value that to continue, so that your communities can continue the work. That's what's important.
Right. It's an ongoing process and I understand what Shari said, that it's, you know, one day you walk in, you walk out and you feel good or not for a few hours, but it is an ongoing process that has to be, took a muscle that's got to be exercised, right? So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Anything else? Thank you so very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Wait, wait, don't go anywhere.
I'm sorry. June, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Nice meeting you, Dr. Carley, and soon to be Dr. Orr. I'm Dr. June Y. I'm one of the chairs, one of the chairs of the Dobbs Ferry Village Human Rights and Diversity Committee, just like Shari, who spoke earlier. And I have a few questions and I really appreciate your presentation. You know, in terms of the instruction that you're planning for this workshop, this one-day workshop, I have a few questions. So how are you coordinating with the current DEI training that has already been unfolding in the local school district? So that's one. Another is, how are you differentiating your instruction across individuals and agencies? So when I say agencies, I mean like, for example, you know, how you operationalize DEI concepts for, you know, the DPW would be different for, you know, different from, you know, another agency, for example, you know, the mayor and board of trustees, you know? They have a different focus and rightfully so. And another point that I wanted to ask is, how do you make that linkage between the theory and the academics, the historical aspects of your presentation to the application? Again, operationalizing. How much time do you give participants in your one-day workshop to that? Because I think a lot of people want to know those concrete steps. And the fourth point is a little bit harder, but maybe, I mean, you probably are aware of some local current community discussions in school groups about critical race theory. You know, there's a lot of, you know, thinking around that, some misconceptions, some incomplete understandings of that. And how are you going to prepare your workshop accordingly? Yeah. So those four points. Thanks.
All right. Well, those are great questions and, you know, congratulations to you and your colleague for the work you've been doing on your task force. I've looked at some of your material. I think it's, I think it's very well done and we would want to do anything that we did across the villages, we want to be compatible with what's going on within your own village. So with regard to question number one, I've not actually seen the curriculum of the DEI work that the school board is doing. I feel confident of the materials, from the materials I have seen, there's nothing that we would be doing inconsistent with it and would be happy if this goes forward to take a deeper look into the content of that and try to link with it as much as we possibly can. Number two was differentiation across the different services. Our training is more about personal awareness and reflection, understanding where implicit bias comes from and how it manifests itself primarily through microaggressions. Having worked in local government myself for over 40 years and at all levels within local government, I don't think there's a requirement for the work that we're doing to be differentiated. I have done the senior management of the police department. I have done every level of employee in a wastewater treatment program. And the content has been fundamentally this thing. It's how do we understand ourselves and how we see the world and how do we, how do we recognize the blind spots that we have and adjust so that we do not unintentionally or inadvertently hurt or harm other people through our words and actions? Very fundamental work. And we don't do it from an academic standpoint. We do it from hands-on exercises. The real value in our workshops comes from the peer interaction. We lay the foundation, the concepts, and then we have people work in small groups to develop a sense of their own self-awareness and sharing with one another. And that is where, that's part of the real power that comes from the workshops. And the fourth question was...
Critical race theory.
Oh, I was wondering if we were going to get through tonight with that, with critical race theory or not. So thank you. Almost in this atmosphere, it would be, it would be impossible to get away from it. So we don't, we don't teach critical race theory. In fact, I remember several months ago, I got an email from Cheryl, Ron, what do you know about this critical race theory stuff? And the first time I ever mentioned it in a workshop or a class was the summer when I'm teaching a class on race and institutions and only racing in class, because my students needed to know it. and only racing in class because my students needed to know it. And I sent them a massive report from the Heritage Foundation attacking critical race theory so that they could see both sides. And so we're really not about critical race theory. We're about critical thinking. We're about people understanding unconsciously what goes on in our brains by the very nature that we're human and how that can result in our acting in ways inconsistent with our with with what our intent and values are. And we want people to recognize that so that we can begin to deal with how we treat one another in decent and respectful ways on a one-on-one basis and build that out into our organizations. Cheryl, elaboration on any of those?
Just just to add that we're looking for behavior. You you talked about operationalizing the DE and I principles, which is what I talk about all the time. And that operationalization is a behavior change as it relates to the interaction with each other. Based on, I have a better understanding of you and I now can interact with you. And then ultimately, the work that I do is better for the citizens of wherever community. So that's how exactly how we kind of connect it all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any other questions, Jim? Okay. Thank you. And we'll, I guess the next step would be Richard to coordinate with the other communities. Is that?
Yes, I just want to give you a heads up on what we're working on and see if we can continue moving. And I'll coordinate with the other communities, see what they're doing, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity. Take care.
Our next presentation is by the applicant for a proposed site plan amendment as referred by the building inspector for a property at one hundred Danforth Avenue regarding the expansion of an existing terrace with related retaining wall and landscaping. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good to be here. Members of the board, Brad Schwartz from Zarenstein Metz, representing Lincoln Property Company, the owner and operator of the Danforth Park Buildings in Rivertown Square. This is Michael Gotteletta, the architect. He's pulling up the drawings now. I promise you will be quick. We're here just for an initial presentation. It's a simple site plan amendment to allow an outdoor patio space of about a thousand square feet before your board, only because it's the Chauncey Square Zone, excuse me, zoning district. And therefore, we, your board has that jurisdiction referral to planning board. So all we're here to do tonight is to present the plans and ask you what to refer us to planning board for each review and comment. Come back to your board at the end of the process for final approval. And we have the drawings up.
So all you have to do is share screen. It's like you're on Zoom, but on that laptop.
Got that?
Yes.
All right, we're just skip just the main drawing. We'll be quick.
Try and chance you can make it the full screen.
Except, yeah.
We're zooming so. So that.
Thank you.
I was picking up on the error. Think it may be beneficial to solve some photographs. See, the site. What we're talking about is is some proposed work in the rear yard in and around the the tenant amenity of the pool area. So in the back of the Danforth, there is a small barbecue area. Some of it here, and it joins the pool. And it's woefully inadequate. And and over the the events over the past year has really played this out with the tenants and management there. So we're really here to try and expand on on that barbecue area. We want to have some ability to have family and seating in in that area. It it kind of works in conjunction with the pool and the events over the past year has made owners and management really aware that it's severely undersized. The complex is just a little over two hundred units. And the the pools had to be closed. Obviously, it's, things are just starting to open now. So what we're hoping to do is that is present this to the board in a favorable fashion that we can expand. It's been this small area. The the plan is to actually add about four hundred square feet to to the current barbecue area. We're not touching the pool area. We would be extending the patio there that's there. We would just move the retaining wall that currently exists. There's a small retaining wall between our level of the pool and the barbecue area and and grade, right? It's a little less than four feet high. So we would like to add another barbecue, double it, right? So we would have two. And then some tables and chairs, porous paving. We would use the exact same materials that currently exist there now. Retaining will be exactly the same. In a nutshell, the drainage flows around the pool in in a swell that has been designed. The initial concept drawings, we would just continue that. So we're really not talking about much of a change with the exception of having the ability to have a larger barbecue and seating area for guests for our, you know, our unit. And just to orient the board, right, this is the building pulls up the side back here. And so and right side. This is the extended patio and it pulls off to the side. Here's the lawn area, the small part way back.
So that's currently lawn right now. It's grass. Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay. And you're going to, very little of the space will be. The grass will be.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the site plan and looking at the proposal, it's very modest. It's in keeping with the building. It's real, it's discreet relative to the property. There's the only people looking at it are going by it seventy miles an hour. And so, you know, I think this is a very reasonable proposal. I I don't think, assuming the planning board takes no issues. I don't see any issues when you come back to us or.
I just have a question about visibility from Chauncey Park. Will there be any kind of screening action more for your benefit than for the people in the park?
We certainly continue. It's.
Because you know, we're.
Beautifully landscaped now.
Saying, so.
Yes.
There'll be more people there.
It's beautifully landscaped now, and we have every intention of continuing that landscape around. We're going to match the fence. You know, we have a our own responsibility for our tenants to to keep them safe. So we have a fence. We have landscaping. The access is controlled. So yes, we we certainly are going to screen that in a similar fashion to what's what's there now. And part of our presentation is actually a landscape plan that we will present to the board.
I see some pines in that lower right hand corner.
Yes.
So that's that's something that it will be then continue to.
Yes. In that lower right hand corner, we're essentially going to take that retaining wall and just stretch it out a little bit. I I think it's, I don't have it in front of me, it's about twenty-five feet further. And it, we will align it with the pool. So we're not going to go beyond the pool. It'll just be more of a continuous fence. It's like a little niche missing out of that where the pool extends into the backyard. And the barbecue area was was is actually much smaller. So we're just going to make it even, if you will.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for the presentation. I know we have this as an action item number two, but Laurel, it's, I could just jump to that right now, right?
Sure. It's your prerogative.
Okay. While you guys are here, we might as well take the action on it, right? So we have a resolution where we're going to declare ourselves the lead agency and refer it to the to the planning board. I guess we also have to refer to the Westchester County Planning Board. Is that as well?
That would be an informational filing because the site plan disturbance level doesn't rise to waiting for comments. It's just an informational filing, which your planner can accomplish for you.
Okay, so as outlined in our as our proposed resolution, I'm just very quickly going to read that the we've resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Dobbs Ferry has sole approval authority. Hereby declares that it will serve as the lead agency for the environment to review the project. We have further resolved that a review of the environmental assessment form, the board of trustees determines that the proposed project resulted in no significant environmental impacts. And be a further resolved that the Dobbs trustees of the village of Dobbs Ferry hereby direct that the project be referred for comment and recommendation to the Dobbs Ferry Planning Board as required by the zoning code and for notification purposes referred to the Westchester County Planning Board. Is there a motion? Trustee Patino, second Deputy Mayor Cassano. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we're on to public hearings and we're going to continue the public hearing on the proposed zoning code and map amendments recommended by the planning board. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Trustee Durazi, second trustees Sullivan, all in favor. Public hearing is hereby open. We've met on this a few times. I think we may be ready to move on this. Is that correct, Laurel Lee?
That's actually trustee Patino and and Rob have worked to incorporate the changes that were discussed. And the the version you have before you contains all of the revisions, including the the revisions that trustee Patino suggested to the guidelines document. So you have a complete revised.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I consulted with the chair of the HRB and Mr. Lane, planning board, our village planner. She made a few suggestions about incorporating some elements of the guidelines into the zoning code. And those were the elements relative to setbacks. Setbacks are defined in the tables. And she felt that it was important that if the guideline was in place, that that also be part of the table and the zoning. The zoning language, not just part of a guideline. So we added that. But otherwise, I think we made some other sort of minor corrections that were found. And I think we are all very satisfied with this as it is. I'd like to address Mr. Steinshiner's letter from several weeks ago. I think there were two, two main points. The first was about the question of bringing in to compliance a greater number of properties. We felt as a, as a, as a group that we were sort of meeting a reasonable middle ground, that we were never going to be able to incorporate all of them. We could, and so we thought that the the forty percent number was about the right number. The second issue that that was brought up was about the sliding scale and how that could affect properties of similar sizes, but slightly different. So if you were right on the cusp of where the sliding scale changes, for example, seventy-four hundred ninety-nine feet versus seventy-five hundred and one, you wouldn't be able to build less on that ladder designated property than a former. And I think that while that is an interesting theoretical point, it seems that that's very unlikely to happen. And if it does, the it could be addressed property to property. I think if you were to to have less, if you were close to that seventy-five hundred number, but slightly over, the planning board would be willing to work with that and to, in a sensible way. So we chose not to make either of those changes. But I do appreciate your comments and I did take them into consideration and we did discuss them.
Any comment?
Got any other comments from?
It's public hearing, you can.
I'm sorry, can you go to the mic? Can you go to the mic? And that was just for the public educational forum. Sorry, Patty.
Not a problem. I think it actually affects a lot of the properties in the district. The average property size is over seventy-five hundred square feet. There's a perception that there are only a couple. It actually is a significant number of them. If you take the property that I used to be working on at one fifty-six Palisade, that property is eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five square feet. And it is allowed to have twenty-six or twenty, between twenty-five and twenty-six hundred square feet of site coverage with the sliding scale. Whereas if it was less than seventy-five hundred square feet, it would be allowed three thousand square feet of site coverage. That just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The people who are working on it now have actually proposed that they will subdivide off the difference between seventy-four ninety-nine and eight six seventy-five so they can reduce it to less than seventy-five hundred square feet. So they can have a three thousand square foot site coverage instead of the, you know, twenty-six hundred, wherever it was. I gave you a concept of how you could adjust that, which we've used in a lot of different environment, you know, villages, which tends to work fairly well, which is you accept that seventy-five hundred square feet as your maximum that the forty can be applied to. And then what you do is you don't have a sliding scale. You simply say, any property that's larger than that, the property that's larger can only be twenty, twenty-two percent, whatever you'd set. That way, you're never, you're never penalizing a site for being bigger. You're controlling the size of the project that it could otherwise develop to be.
I I took that point seriously and we discussed it. I ultimately, and and I I don't like to speak for the people, so I'm going to generally paraphrase. But the the other parties, our village planner and and some representatives from the planning board felt that it was overly complicated and overly nuanced scenario. So their advice was to maintain the current sliding scale as as it relates to, you know, sort of hard numbers in seventy-five hundred.
Can you explain how the sliding scale works? So far, when I've asked that question, they've they've given a number which comes from the single family sliding scale chart, which doesn't apply to multifamily homes. I mean, just for example, if you had a ninety-five hundred square foot lot, what would you be permitted to have?
Art.
You had a ninety-five hundred square foot lot, what would your square footage be?
Let's see.
Ed Manley is here.
Right. Okay.
Ed, can you hear us?
Yes. So Patty was asking what a ninety-five hundred square foot lot would be and it's, you take the the prescribed coverage in that zone and multiply it by point eight two. And then you come up with the answer.
Anybody else from cyberspace want to comment? Okay, I think we've addressed this issue long enough. I think we're ready to take action on it. So is there a motion to close this public hearing? Trustee Durazi, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. We do have a resolution in our packet, which I think we're ready to move on. I'm just going to quickly highlight this law, which amends the zoning code. It's an amendment to the village of Dobbs Ferry zoning code to adopt and incorporate character guidelines on Palisade Street, clarify area and bulk tables in appendix B, and revise the zoning map to relocate the MDR dash one boundary to include both sides of Maple Street between South Broadway and Park Road and rezone single parcel at northwest corner Rochambeau Avenue and Broadway from MDR dash one to B. We believe that the this, these amendments will achieve three key objectives. It will reduce pre-existing non-conformities and better align zoning requirements with existing development patterns and practice. Two, provide guidance to applicants and land use boards to improve design outcomes for future development on Palisade Street between Chestnut and Cedar Streets. And number three, clarify the area and bulk dimensional tables which in application have proved to be very problematic. So I mean, we've had the opportunity to review it. Is there a motion to pass this resolution? Trustee Cassell, second trustee Patino, all in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work that you've done. Mike, Ed, Planning Board, Laurie. So thank you very much for everyone's efforts and Patty for your input as well. So thank you. Okay, let's move on to another public hearing, which is to consider in a law which will complete the process of moving the fees associated with the building permit renewals from section one two seven dash seven to the master fee schedule. Is there a motion to open this public hearing? Deputy Mayor Cassell, second trustee Durazi, all in favor? The public hearing is now open. And who can? Richard, Laurie, somebody?
Sure. Two meetings ago, you passed a resolution to include the fees in your master fee schedule, and this completes the process because the text of this particular section, chapter one twenty seven, includes the fees in the text itself. The other section you moved was the recreation fees and that just references a schedule must be maintained. And now those have been incorporated in the fee schedule. Your clerk, Ms. Draper and I have been working with the Recreation Department to get those fees. We have them. This is just the remaining effort. This really should have been caught up when we moved all the other texts and fees into the master fee schedule in chapter one, one seventy five, which just points out that all the fees are now found in that schedule and they can be amended by a simple resolution in action of the board instead of a local law each and every time you want to amend. It doesn't change the, the fees that are in the text. It just moves those fees now into your master fee schedule and then you can take up the issue of whether you'd like to revise them at a later time.
Great, thanks. Any questions from the trustees? Any questions from the public? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Durazi, all in favor? Public hearing is now closed. I think we're ready to move on this. We do have this in our packet. It's outlined as to what Laurie said. So is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Trustee Durazi, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Public hearing number three is the public hearing to consider an introductory local law to amend chapter one twelve, article three, which result, which involves the proposed expansion of the village's smoking prohibitions. Is there a motion to open this public hearing? Trustee Patino, second trustee Cassell, all in favor? Meeting, the public hearing is now open. Maybe you could provide a little background, Laurie?
Certainly. You have a, a chapter in your code, chapter one twelve, which covers the the use of alcoholic beverages and smoking in the village. Right now, the prohibition that exists in your chapter as to smoking is related only to parks and parklands, which are defined as parks under the control and playgrounds with general access by the public to the playground. So those are now the only two areas that you have smoking prohibited. I did send out in support of this a summary of other code provisions. I don't see it attached as backup, but I know you've got it. What our communities are doing in terms of smoking prohibitions, there's some language there, you know, to increase and clarify what a public park area consists of. And also I sent out the existing enforceable regulations that are already in place in accordance with your Department of Health rules and also your educational rules. I sent out those areas such as not within forty feet of the entrance of any place of employment. No smoking in the workplace, you know, the usual things, no smoking in restaurants and bars. The usual things that you would expect smoking prohibitions to include. Those are already enforceable because they already exist by virtue of regulation and laws. This is just the areas of local concern that you may want to address right now. No smoking of tobacco products and weed in a plant, any plant materials are already prohibited, but just in this narrow area. So I drafted it very broadly to see if you, you know, wanted to, to take up the issue of narrowing this down or refining it further.
Laurie, is this, does the new, would the new law include vaping as well?
It does.
Yes, it says that already. Any, any means of igniting or any method of smoking is already incorporated. And it, like I said, it already includes cannabis. So that's not what this is about. It's, what it's about is for you to look at those areas which are under the village's control, exclusive control. So.
So just for the benefit of the public, smoking is already prohibited in parks and playground areas.
Correct.
So we're faced with whether we want to expand it to other areas such as sidewalks, parking lots, under the control of the village. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And like I said, I've just, I, I broadened it
Right.
for you to look at each category and decide what you wanted to.
So some discussion.
Yeah, I, I have a question. We talked about parks. There's the legal parks and then there's areas that we use as parks, but they're not actually designated as parks like High Street. How would we, if we want to include that, how would we do that?
Well, that I, you can expand the definition of parks to include part, you know, parks and recreation areas under the exclusive care and control of the village.
I think we should have a broader discussion first and then hone in on some of the specifics because I think there's a, there's a big question which is before us. And that is, and the reason we're talking about prohibiting smoking has nothing to do with tobacco or vaping. It really has, has everything to do with cannabis because the change in March, the new legislation which allows that is really what the impetus for this conversation. So I mean, to that end, I, I'm going to just read a quote from Senate Majority Leader Stuart Cousins from March twenty eighth this year. Today, New York stepped up and took transformative action to end the prohibition of adult use marijuana. The legislation is a momentous first step in addressing the racial disparities caused by the war on drugs that has plagued our state for too long. This effort was years in the making and we have finally achieved what many thought was impossible. A bill that legalizes marijuana while standing up for social equity, enhancing education and protecting public safety. So I think that the first issue to be addressed is some people's discomfort with that law. And I think the way that we address it is first with education, then with a discussion, and then last with legislation. I think if we're to jump directly into legislation without the conversation, without the educational component, we'd be doing ourselves a disservice. So I put together a few kind of points and I'm, I'm willing to keep looking at this and I'm willing to hear other points of view as well. But there, there is some question about secondhand smoke outdoors. We all know what the effects are indoors. And so, so how does that affect outdoors? And there's, you know, some people dismiss it as just, you know, you're in the open air. It doesn't affect you. But that's not exactly how it works. There are studies about outdoor smoking and they all are about, they all show that close proximity. For example, if you're sitting at a cafe table and the person sitting at the table next to you is two feet away and they're smoking a cigarette or marijuana or cigar, that, that you will have harmful negative effects of secondhand smoke, the same you would as you would indoors. Once you get to the six foot mark, that the impact drops off precipitously. Once you get past ten or twelve feet, it, it's almost nonexistent. It, it, it sort of tends to end up in the same classification as sort of generalized pollution. And so, you know, I think that given those things, that we should be thinking about proximity and activity as a function of how we craft the law. And what I mean by that is that in places where you cannot separate by any, by ten feet, there should be no smoking, whether that's cigarettes or marijuana or e-cigarettes, doesn't really matter. I think that evidence is clear that it can be harmful, particularly as it relates to developing lungs. So that mean children or anyone with asthma where you have, you know, sort of extremely harmful effects. So what, what does that mean? I think that there's no question about playgrounds. I think we should strengthen and enforce the question of playgrounds. There's no question about schools. There's no question about bleachers. There's no question about sporting events. I think we can include all of those things and we can include some kind of buffer zone around them so that if you do want to watch the football game at Cool Park, you can't smoke in the bleachers, but you can walk out onto sidewalk and you can have cigarette or whatever, whatever is well. So I, I think that's, that's I think we should be, we should be using the science. We should be thinking about it that way. And, and I don't think we should be putting this in, you know, sort of broad questions about whether or not people should be using marijuana. We're past that in the state legislation. And I don't think that our board should be attempting to subvert what the state legislature has, has worked hard to pass. I, I think that, you know, there's a few scenarios that we can envision regarding the enforcement of a broader spectrum ban on smoking. Let's say we were to include streets, sidewalks, parking lots, trails, everything that was included in the original drafted local law. You, you, you look at a scenario where the police are being asked to approach a couple of young guys who are smoking on the sidewalk and they don't want to comply. They don't want to show their identification. And, you know, we go from a scenario that's relatively harmless, someone smoking on the street to a potential you know, unnecessary escalation of what is essentially recreational and legal activity. And so it, it, that to me seems like a litmus test for, you know, whether something makes sense or not. If you think of it a different way, if you allow in some places, but not in others, you allow both the police department and you allow you know, residents or, or visitors to the village to have options. So yeah, you can't smoke near the playground, but you can take it down the street. You can take it to the sidewalk. You can take it somewhere else. So I, I think there's a certain sort of sensibility that we should be considering. And I think we should be looking at a blanket ban on all public property because really it, it, it's, it's kind of silly at this point. But I think we should be looking at strengthening the, the areas where it matters.
With that said, Laurie, what would that mean for our restaurants and bars that actually their patrons actually smoke outside of those establishments?
Well, as it stands now, the I, I, I sent out a, a list of the existing regulations. I, I can't access it right now because I can't get to my desktop. But I did send out a list of, of the places that it's already prohibited and that includes within forty feet of the entrance of any place of employment. So if they were to step out of the bar, the, the current regulations require them to move forty feet away. So you know, that, that already exists and could be enforced should you choose to enforce it. It is, it is illegal to smoke in restaurants and bars. So even your sidewalk cafes, they're not smoking areas of restaurants and bars. So that already exists by virtue of regulations already on the books.
Those are state regulations. Those aren't local regulations.
They are state regulations and they're based on the Clean Air Act, which is a federal regulation. Yeah. So you have the ability to enforce those regulations as they exist today. This was just an opportunity for you to start dialogue to determine if you wanted to expand the prohibition to other areas of the village in the, you know, control of the village. In so already, for example, it's banned under the education law. It's already banned on school grounds. It's already banned within a certain distance of the recreation fields owned and operated by the school. All of that stuff is in place already.
About like public places of worship, like churches and stuff like that. Is that already banned there?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's banned within forty feet of an establishment, that pretty much covers a lot of the sidewalks.
Yes.
All right.
I don't, I don't see that. Am I, I'm seeing it? Talking about public health law, article thirteen.
Well, there's, there's a series of the, I don't, I apologize. There's a series of them and I think the county's regulations say it's banned within forty feet of the entrance to a place of employment. And I, I think you often see the placard outside of business offices, office buildings, public places that says, no smoking within forty feet of this entrance. And it's in furtherance of that regulation.
I run in a smoke-free facility and they're not allowed to smoke within fifteen feet of the entrance of my hotel and it's a never-ending battle because nobody really so it's a very hard thing to actually reinforce.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I think that on in the parks that would be more enforceable. First of all, it's already existing. People aren't smoking in parks as it is and it's an area that's very defined. Um, parking lots possibly a pup, but Villa Joan parking lots, I don't think should be private parking lots. I don't think should apply to that. Sidewalks, I think, is a whole nother issue. I mean, I don't have the initial so much with the cannabis smoke as I do with the tobacco smoke, but that's a whole nother thing.
You have no authority to ban it on private property. This is really just in public parking lots.
But I mean, I, I do think banning it on sidewalks is kind of pushing it as much as like Patty said earlier, I'd rather not smell anything. But there are people who do enjoy it. It is part of their recreation. And why I might not like it, we also have to think about the village residents who do enjoy it. And, you know, if we're going to restrict it, how much are we going to restrict it?
And I take frequent walks in this village, especially here in the downtown. And I don't, is, I don't see that as a current problem for us. I don't think is abuse. I don't think is so frequently done. So I, I kind of agree that they, I, I'm more concerned about the harm that it can cause the businesses. Somebody passes by real quick, you know, it's a quick walk by.
So you're concerned with someone comes out of a restaurant or a bar and they are prohibited from smoking. It'll be, but they already are according to Laurie within forty feet, right?
That's, yeah, that's, that's, that's county regulation. I'm, I apologize. I just opened this up. Thank you. It's, it isn't included here, but that's a Westchester County.
Yeah, exactly. Question about something like that too. Like if you have outdoor cafes, you're not allowed to smoke while you're sitting at the outdoor cafe, but if somebody's standing next to somebody who's sitting at an outdoor cafe and in the middle of the street, that's pretty offensive. But how you regulate that either?
Is the chief present?
Yes.
Could we have him give us his opinion?
Yes.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Chief's good.
Regardless of my, my personal feelings regarding marijuana use, as trustee Patino had mentioned and one of the other speakers, the, the train has left the station. So certainly attempting to regulate outdoor use and public space is not like parks, but sidewalks potentially does cause some enforcement issues for us insofar as if it's, if it is legally possessed because of Albany, then what are we enforcing? Is it's a, a civil code or a civil penalty? So then I guess my question would be, do we want the police department involved in civil fines? And what if, what if we turn up something out of that stop that is more serious? Are we potentially looking at fruit from the poison tree that, you know, technically we may not have had authorization to conduct that investigation? authorization to conduct that investigation? You know, just some things that we, we should discuss when we don't have a probable cause. Just simply, uh, smelling marijuana. Now, uh, we have to utilize other, especially if, you know, a, an operator is in a vehicle, we have to use other investigative methods to determine intoxication. Uh, but odor is no longer a reason for, you know, furthering that investigation. So I mean, that kind of would apply on a street level stop as well, that if we're interacting with the public because someone has called that they feel that, uh, group of subjects are smoking in public, um, and they hide the, uh, the cigarette. You know, we really can't do anything more than that. And, um, they said, I think we really should kind of explore this a little bit further. Uh, there's, there's still some, I think, gray areas, uh, in regards to this. And, um, and I think we have some time to, to discuss this further.
Hey, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak, whether in here or out there? Somebody? Okay. I do think the streets and the sidewalks will be very difficult and, uh, right, you know, the, the parking lot out here is always, you know, me, you and I spoke about it also, the parking lot. It's, I don't know.
I also think Eastman's and right of ways are, the public doesn't even know what that means.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So I think we should just put this over to the next, we'll think about it and we'll, we'll move on it. I hope at the next meeting. At the aqueduct, the, uh, not with the state property, right? So we have no, we have no sale for that. So people can just do that regardless.
The state doesn't allow smoking in its parks. So no state park is permitted smoking. So, you know, we're, we're, we're really, and, and as we've seen, there's, there's a, in the downtown, at least, there's virtually no place where you can smoke on the sidewalk. So that leaves the majority of the rest of the village sidewalks and streets. And, and really, when you think about the science, it's about close proximity, right? And so we, we, we should, if, if there were a real public health related issue behind this, we should be considering that, but there isn't. And so really what we're getting into, and this is my point in the beginning, is is our collective discomfort with the cannabis law.
Right.
And, and it really has everything to do with that and has nothing to do with, with the science and it has nothing to do with cigarette smoking, you know, because it's fairly regulated already by state, by the county and by the village. So let's, let's talk about that. Let's, let's educate ourselves about that. And, and, and I think that's what leads to simplifying this rather than making it more complicated than it already is, as we say.
I do like the rewarding of the opening, the way you put about health. I think is better than what we have now.
I also think it's good to expand a little bit to the athletic fields and bleachers. Like that wasn't really part of the
Right.
The original law was just parks and playgrounds.
Yeah, those, I mean, those are important because of the proximity question, which is what this, what the science tells us. You know, you're three or four feet away from someone. Secondhand smoke is negatively impacting you. And there tends to be greater, you know, concentration of kids at places like that. And I think even forgetting that public health issue, just our adults setting a good example around kids. I mean, the, you know, separate question, which we're not really in the business of legislating, but just as a, you know, as a resident, as a citizen, we shouldn't be encouraging kids to smoke anything. Um, and so doing that at you know, baseball games or whatever, those things should be elsewhere.
So do I need a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Yes, I would.
Yep.
When is the next meeting?
August tenth.
So is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
How does it work though? Like if we adjourn it to the public hearing, next meeting, but it's the same language here, can we pass it or can we modify it during the meeting?
Sure, you can modify it. You can, um, you, you know, first of all, make sure there's no member of the public that is attending today that wanted to make a comment. And then you can, you can certainly take a stab at modifying it and put it, put it back on for public hearing in a modified form. And, uh, you know, we can take it from there. I, I can, I can take a look at it. With the language suggested having to do with health effects. And, uh, I can present you, uh, a red line copy of a, a revised law. If, if that's the general, general consensus.
I want to review what you send us from the communities.
But if we modify it at the next meeting, then you have to put it over until the September meeting to approve it?
No.
Okay.
You can, you can, uh, adopt it right up, right up to the, you know, last minute, you can keep revising it. You, uh, you're not, you're not changing it wholesale. Uh, you can choose not to act on it at all and just leave it as it stands now with, uh, prohibiting, uh, public park, um, locations and and it's really, it's well within your purview to do that.
Since it's been referenced, uh, more than once in this discussion, the, uh, the adjacent communities, which we, we looked at, I don't know, maybe seven or eight adjacent communities and what their local laws were. And aside from Austin, um, all of the other villages and towns had did not include streets and sidewalks. They were limited to parks, ballfields, uh, playgrounds, things like that. So I think just, you know, the, the big picture is that
If I may just clarify that, all the other communities have, uh, don't have a separate chapter for, um, alcohol and tobacco. All of the other provisions quoted, except for the village of Austin. Those provisions are in their parks and recreation chapters. So it's a little different here because you have a separate, separate chapter. So you have the ability to, to entertain, um, uh, you know, the minutia where the other organizations would need to separate their no smoking prohibitions into a, um, you know, in some cases, there's a, a public health and nuisance chapter and some, you know, I just, I, I just did a broad search for the, just the general local area to see, but everyone except the village of Austin includes the smoking prohibitions in their parks and recreation chapters directly. And you don't have that.
How does that affect the way I think about this or the way anyone should think about this?
It, it affects it because, uh, it's not an apples to apples comparison. It's not as simple as an apples to apples comparison. Um, and, and also, um, because it's separated out, you have the ability to find any nuances to talk about the health, um, effects for a broader area of the village. That's all. So, so as you're suggesting.
So because those are in the parks and recreation line, uh, section, they're not addressing all public property because they cannot there. So is there, so I suppose we should look at those communities again and see if there is other language elsewhere in there.
There is.
There is not.
No, I, I
So we have to assume that they, that is intentional. They have chosen not to implement.
I don't know if you can say that. But, but you have the ability to nuance it like you're suggesting, to talk about health effects and to talk about proximity and to talk about science. And you can apply that to other areas of village if you so choose.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, I was also concerned with what Nicole said, that we can change the law. We can have a public hearing right there and then change the law and then vote on it that day.
Well, you've had a public hearing tonight suggesting changes, which I will make for you and get you another draft. You can further refine and revise that based upon a, a continued discussion input from the public and such. As, as you see fit. So yes, you can continue to refine it. That's the purpose of the public hearing. And getting the comments from your fellow board members now, um, there's, there's direction and focus and, uh, uh, I'll take another, I'll certainly be able to, um, to provide that level of nuance because you have a separate chapter and we can address the nuance as, as you would like to. And, and you can revise it right up to the moment it's adopted.
And we can also take comments and writing from the public too, between now and the, and the next year. Anybody who's interested can, can write to us with their comments.
Correct. Yes. And, and you're, again, just to be clear, your code already prohibits partaking of cannabis, but only in parks and playgrounds with public access to them. That's right now. We're not changing this to include cannabis in any form whatsoever. You already had that because your definition includes weed and other plant materials. So.
Right. But I do like the fact that we spelled it out, athletic fields, suspected areas, bleachers, picnic areas. So, you know, the rest of the, uh, we can, you know, it doesn't seem like we're going to go forward with the streets, sidewalks, easements, rights of way. So
Yeah, I can, I can certainly.
Ways and trails.
Yeah. Well, I'll send a red line out. Um, I can add, put in the intent, the legislative intent section. The specifics that trustee Patino can actually send me, the specifics. If, if he desires to, the specifics as to proximity, the specifics as to intent to protect underage or tender age from the effects of the secondhand smoking, the health effects. You know, whatever, um, you, you know, you want to do, but I, I certainly will. When you get a red line back, we'll have removed rights of way, easements, streets, sidewalks, that kind of.
Are we okay with that? Maury, you okay with that? Nicole?
I am.
You know, except it's otherwise covered by the Clean Air Act and, and
Right.
What, what village walkways are there even? Are there any?
Well, you suggested there were some parks that maybe you need to include that aren't a dedicated parkland, but we can refine the definition. So
Recreation areas or something.
During, um, the new, the new park, the Chauncey Park Trail, there's, uh, you know, there's some, there's some disparate things around the village. I think, you know, High Street, if it gets renovated right now, there's really nowhere to go, uh, but in High Street except in bushes. So, um, what's probably happening anyway? So, yeah, I think, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a fair amount of other areas and I, I was just, I didn't want you know, I think we should just look at them each one. That's, that's all.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn this public hearing to August, to our next, what are trustee meeting on August tenth, twenty twenty one? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Girazi, all in favor? Okay. So that's adjourned. Appointments, Mayor Russell to announce the following appointments to the ad hoc affordable housing task force for a term of one year. Rebecca Pitts, Robin Larkin, Elizabeth Mendez and Lorraine Campagnelli. So, um, Donna, anything you'd like to add to this?
Yeah, no, these are really four terrific people. They're all, um, community advocates. I think a lot of us know these people already. Rebecca Pitts has done a lot in, uh, transportation on traffic, uh, safety issues. Uh, she was also on the library board. Robin Larkin has extensive experience in, um, in working on public housing and affordable housing. She's the former head of, uh, Community Immigrant Services. She's now the executive director of Spring Community Partners. Elizabeth Mendez works at Children's Village. She's on our Dobbs Story Diversity Committee. Lorraine Campbell is also very active. She is now, she's now the Director of Community Immigrant Services and she serves on the Board of Spring Community Partners. So they're really terrific, active, involved people who, who, who have, um, a passion about this. So I'm excited to have them.
Okay. Great. So welcome. We want to thank them for their, uh, volunteering to join this committee, which Donna has, uh, really gotten, uh,
Beyond one.
So thank you, everyone, and we look forward to, uh, doing some substantive work. So thank you. Next we move to courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone live or online that would like to speak? Okay. So Nicole, being the nice person that she is, suggested that we move up item number three regarding Hudson Social to number one, because you guys have been so patient. So.
Who's waiting for the appetizers to pass?
Don't we need some demonstration?
I don't want demonstration on that topic.
Community mayor, village trustees.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Ron DeRusso, Hudson Social.
Ron, I don't know if you were here in the beginning, but you just have to share your screen like you would on Zoom.
You want to do it now?
We've been here for two hours. So, uh, there's a bathroom break that people want to take. We can do the bathroom break.
Let me share. And then you could pull up the, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. You introduced us?
Yeah.
So after, at the request of DPW, you are, we are asking for the village's permission to, um, to adjust our site plan. For fenced in area, uh, for dumpsters or, uh, for, for, for refuse, for all refuges. We will purchase two, two yard dumpsters, um, that will be able to, that will have the hinges on them for the DPW to be able to pull them directly into the, into the trucks. Additionally, right now our refuse is right against, uh, the train station. So it's against train platform. So it's, it's unsanitary. It doesn't smell good in the summer. Um, and we'd like to move it away from that, that area. We also want to move our recycling, um, and, uh, all recycling to that same area so that it's all sort of away from commuters and, and from, uh, and from our customers as well. This is a pic, this is a picture of what, there are a few pictures of what things look like now. In your senses, all piled in the back against the train platform because that's the only space we have.
And this is on a good day. Yeah.
So what we're proposing this is the survey of the waterfront lot. Sorry, Hudson Social is down at the bottom. You can see it right there someplace. And we're proposing to go over here and I have, I have a more in-depth picture. To the last two spots of the parking lot, the most southern, the southernmost spots of the parking lot. And to take those two spots and utilize them, uh, with fenced in area for a dumpster. Which I'm showing right here. So this is, again, this is Hudson Social. And, uh, the yellow area is where the two spots are. And that we're thinking about. And this, this would put it away from the platform, uh, away from the restaurants as well. Uh, we would lose two parking spots. But we think it's, it's, it's in all of our better interest to do this.
And it will be properly covered and fenced.
It will have a stockade fence around it.
Can you make it any prettier than that? Little mural, little paintings.
We could try something. Picture of Brussels sprouts. This, these are the two parking spots we're talking about. We're here.
How's that going to impact traffic? I mean, if you're pulling in the DPW truck and people are pulling in to commute. Is it going to be a stop or they're
Cars there in the bars and our spaces in the morning.
So they would be able to pull up into our spaces if there would be, you know, to prevent the traffic.
Although, although we are requesting to set back a bit, possibly the sidewalk that you see next to these two spots is really a sidewalk to nowhere. It, it ends and you can, I have another picture which shows it a little bit better. Yeah, right here. So this, this space we're talking about. And sidewalk you can see here, um, really just ends. It goes, goes nowhere. So what we would actually prefer is that we, we set back the, the fenced in area, uh, closer to this sign. Um, over the sidewalk.
Are you talking about disrupting shrubs and bushes and trees? Okay.
No, not at all. It would be on the sidewalk area and not extending onto the grass. And that would give, that would give a bit more room for the sanitation trucks to pull up. We, one concern I have, and you know, see is that the entrance to the, the entrance to the, um, See, is that the entrance to the, the entrance to the station lot is right here. So, so ideally, ideally, the trucks would pull in to, in front of the, on the side of the spaces when there, you know, when, you know, when they're empty. And they generally are in the morning. But, but it is a concern, and that's why I'm going to try to set it back as far as possible.
You know, even, even, you know, now, because I'm witnessing every morning when they come, there's still, if there were cars coming. They're going to still, where they're picking up our garbage now across the street, which is an absolute mess to begin with. They're still, can't really, can't really get around the truck anywhere. Because there's, there's two.
They're blocking.
They're blocking it, I mean, there's, there, there's two guys on the side, they're dumping everything in. It might be a car or two that's maybe waiting, if that, they're out of there pretty quick. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's an absolute mess, what it is right now. I mean, if they don't get there to us by, you know, eleven thirty in the morning. If they get there to us by Sunday, by twelve, twelve thirty. You know, I have customers complaining that that's what they're looking at, and that's what they're smelling.
What time of the day do they usually?
Usually they're fairly early, once in a while, it might be because they're doing recycling first, then they're coming back to get garbage. But usually it's.
This is what our garbage looks like now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah.
So one, one, one little observation that I have, just considering, if you go back to the previous picture that you have. You notice the single tree that it is from the view of the train station into the two spaces. And the two or three bushes that are on the side, which is then the main entrance of the park. If we could enhance the blocking of the, or whatever you're building with some type of trees. It will kind of alleviate the view from the train station into the lot. As well as the entrance of the park, just because we know that on a busy weekend. There's going to be a lot of garbage and what you have currently in the back could happen internally inside that container. And the view from the higher platform could be that people can actually see.
I think the height we did with the fence is.
It's going to be six or five.
Six foot high.
Just keep that in mind, when you guys, of course, keep it in the, in your mind, when you can develop the whole project.
And each of the dumpsters, I think each dumpster is about eight fifty-five gallon cans. So, you know, you'd be, there, there are a lot, you can take a lot of refuges.
Is this something that has to go to the A H R B?
I, I think, I mean, the fence, the, the.
Wait, Bob, this is, well, let you speak, but go ahead, Mike.
Do you need them to get the trucks in there? Yes, yes. There are spaces.
Because you got to put the cans there, that's why, right? No, I'm saying you got to put the cans there, keep the cans there, I think.
Yeah, they are. Those parking spaces belong to Hudson Social, they're not, they're not open to the village.
So let's go back to the H R B, I don't know, Mike, what do you think?
Fence is go to the H R B, I think this is a pretty, I, I, there's no question that this is. This is a benefit for everyone, it's great for them, it's great for us, it's great for everyone who gets on the train, so there's no question that should happen, I think. It, it seems to me like you, like I, I was on the H R B. This is the kind of fence I would have asked you to do, you're already doing it. You know, I, I prefer the simpler one on the left, but honestly, it's a wood fence and it's completely closed. So you can't see between, you know, boards, it's tall enough so that it's, you know, unless the basketball team, professional basketball team is here, no one's going to look into it. You've got two, two yard containers, they have tops on them, they're not unsightly, I think, you know, just. It's a kind of a.
Well, it's still much property.
I know this is a.
It has to go to the H.
Wait, I know this is a discussion item, so what do I, what's the next step?
I think, I, yeah, I, I think it's really. What this is, is they're requesting an amendment to the licensed area. Yeah, that they lease the property, but because these are public, this is public parking, these are part of the licensed area. And they are asking for an amendment to this overall site layout, which is part of the lease. And, and they would need to apply for and obtain a building permit. At which point, the building inspector would send it to the H R B, because it is a building permit and, you know.
Even if it's on village property?
I believe, just technically. I believe so, and it, I think the fence exceeds the maximum, so, you know, I think four feet without.
It does, the fence code is not written that way, and for, it, it, it doesn't address anything like this. And so I think it's an exception could and should be made for the height in this instance.
So in terms of our work right now.
Yes, if you're, if you're in favor of this amendment. Then you, you can, you can pass a resolution calling for amendment of the site layout plan. Which is part of their lease and licensed.
Which you draft.
We, we can address that with, and with Ed's help, they can obtain. The application documents and make their application to the building department to, to enclose this space. And to proceed to, you know, determine, certainly, it, it would need to be visually attractive because of its location, so.
That's again, that's right, so tonight, all I'm going to do, what we're going to do is pass a resolution agreeing to an amendment to the lease. Subject to you and the building inspector's approval.
Well, it would be, it's, yes, it would be, it would be, yes, it would be, it would be your approval to, to make this amendment. And this revision to the site layout plan.
And since we have to amend the agreement, I believe in the agreement, aren't the number of spaces listed in there? Because I know when we initially did this, we gave twelve spaces. Are you, so you would be revoking your right to twelve spaces, you'd be kept, can this in the twelve spaces, or do you need two other spaces?
You're right to two spaces, we would only have ten spaces.
Just throw something out there, could you take the four and a half feet of the sidewalk and put the two yard dumpsters front to back? And then only take one space, is that possible? Like, I, I guess, it's ultimately a question, I, I, I look at this all the time with loading docks, that related things. You'd need the, the, the truck operator to sort of sign off on it, you know, if they can get in, pick up the, if they can get their piece in. But you may be able with one space and the four and a half feet of the sidewalk, build a fence and then lose one spot instead of two, I don't know if it.
Two reasons we, we didn't go that way. One is we wanted to leave enough room for a car and a third space to be able to open its door, so there wouldn't be a fence right there. Secondly, secondly, we want to include all of our recycling.
Got it, so, all right, I just don't, I just.
We started with garbage, then we were like, what are we doing with the other side of the restaurant?
You got grease, you got recycling.
So this isn't, it's not on our agenda, so I'm going to, am I going to add this as an action item morally, as a resolution?
Sure.
All right, so we're going to add this as an action item. I'm going to move it to, I guess, number two, because we've already done one. So is there a motion to grant the request to amend the lease and site layout at Eleven Station Plaza? Subject to the building inspector and the language implemented by the village attorney.
I don't think it should go like even for a soft recommendation from the.
I think we should include that, because in, historically speaking, it doesn't happen.
So I'm with a referral to the H R B. Is there a motion, trustee Patino?
Yeah, I think, I, I, yeah, in support of this, in addition to that, that we are in support of.
Okay, okay. Trustee Patino, second trustee Cassell, all in favor? Now you're two points, after we wrote it on.
Before, is to purchase the two dumpsters up front. I don't think that affects anything, you can leave them, you know, leave them in our space behind and just replace a lot of the cans that we have. And we'll just keep it back there until we're able to.
So you're saying you're going to buy them up front?
Yeah, we'll just buy them now as opposed to waiting until everything's approved. I just don't want to jump ahead.
I mean, that's your, up to you guys. We're not proving it outright, or it has a couple more steps, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liz, I know I made that complicated, did you get all that, you think? Okay, uh, thank you, guys, let's do the discussion of Ferry Fest, though. I know that we have Patty here, so. So we had, we had a proposed date, didn't we? Anybody? Richard, Alyssa, did we have a proposed date, I think? I mean, we had canvassed, I spoke to the clerk, because I wasn't here. I wasn't here previously, and so I think the clerk was canvassing the available dates, September, October. And then I always said it was general, I was told it was generally held the second week of, of October. That true? First Saturday?
Uh, I know trustee Nell had requested Sunday, do we need to discuss that?
Yeah, let's discuss that. So I think trustee Nell suggested a Sunday, because she thought it would be less disruptive to the businesses, downtown businesses. We've never, we've never, we've never done it on a Sunday, right?
I think the biggest difference is the overtime.
I've been involved in a couple of them. Since the first, I've given, Alyssa, Lisa, I didn't give that to you in punishment. I gave her a brief history and information on it, which you probably all want to see before you've set things up. It is long, but it covers everything. And it addresses things like why we don't do it, why we weren't doing it on a Sunday. A lot of the stores and businesses are small operations. When you do it on Sunday, it means that they have to come in. When we, when we went and spoke with business owners and said, what would you think of on Sunday? The restaurants were very favorable, because they figured they don't do as much business on a Sunday as they do on a Saturday. So it would give them support and more sales of food. But none of the other businesses were thinking that it made sense for them to have to come in on the one day of the week when they're off to try and do a festa.
But I would think some of the businesses would be, do most of their business on Saturday. And when they feel the clothes off the street and they can't get, we can't, people can't get access to their business, it hurts them.
Well, most of the businesses are doing a month's worth of business in that one day.
I know that the hair salons, the nail salons complain about it, because it closes up all the parking and all that, and there are a good number of businesses on Cedar, I mean.
They complain about it. I mean, two years ago, just as a kind of, like, how this usually works. Two years ago, I was getting a lot of complaints from one business who were complaining that we allow food trucks. And they thought that was really unfair, because they pay taxes as a brick and mortar. And that year, they happened to sell out by four o'clock. So had they not had food trucks, there wouldn't have been food from anywhere, so I don't think they were suffering from it. But the, you know, the general concept of these things is people will complain a lot. So what I did that year is I said, listen, I'm tired of this, I don't want to be doing this anymore, why don't we just not have the Ferry Fest? They immediately pivoted and said, are you kidding me? We do one twelfth of our business a year on that day.
The restaurants have that too. Yeah, I'm not talking about this, we're not talking, the restaurants would still benefit from it being held on a Sunday or a Saturday. That's not answering the question.
Well, hair salons, and, I mean, they're, they, they've got a full half a day without any real hassle. And it, it, there's no restriction of people being able to do it, other than not being able to park in front of the store, the businesses are still open.
Right, but they complain that, just like, people can't park there, they're going to lose the business.
Yeah, but that's, that's not necessarily true, I mean, it goes back to the same thing about ninety-nine seater parking. You know, like, I have been into towns where there is festivals and, and things going on, especially now. That villages and towns have closed streets to open outdoor dining. And I have to park that away and walk. It's like Donna has always said, the village has a walking problem, not a parking problem.
She stole that from me.
I'm going to do my nails, I'm going to do my nails anyway.
I'm just saying, like, I, I'm not hearing why we're at first, I mean, why reason if overtime's more money is a good reason. It's a better day than Sunday, but I'm not hearing a legitimate reason why Saturday is preferred and. Like, rowdiness, this was Christie's point, I think, in her email, that on a Saturday, people are more inclined to drink more and stay around more and. More on Saturday than they would be on a Sunday.
Vendors, vendors might be a problem, people go to church on Sunday. I, I think that it might decline the attendance and participation doing that on a Sunday.
You have some time to talk to some of the vendors about it, I mean, I would ask some of the hair salons, would they be happier if it was happening on a Sunday? You might get the same response that I got from that other business, where they would say, well, no, because then we're going to lose all the people who come and they find out about us. And we do hair, face painting out in front, and we get a lot of business. It doesn't mean, the, the, one of the hair people who complained, that was actually four or five years ago. They had told us that they had a bridesmaid's thing, and we actually arranged for parking. And we accommodated them a hundred percent, it all turned out to be a little bit of a invention of a problem. And that didn't stop that person from complaining profusely the next day on Facebook. And people stepped up and said, you've got to be kidding me.
There's, there's another question, and not to dismiss the, the needs of businesses, but I think, I think we should weigh those, but also. This is more about everyone, I'm sorry, it's more about residents having a day to enjoy downtown, see each other, see their, you know. So, and, and bring other people in, and it seems to me that Saturdays are more conducive to that sort of thing. Than a Sunday, because people tend to use Sundays, I mean, nowadays, family days, we go to church, people get ready for the school, work week. And things like that, and so, you know, from that perspective, I, I find Saturday to be slightly more favorable. But I'm also open to hearing, if we heard from all the businesses and they all said the same thing, Sunday's the day, then I would, I would reconsider that. Of course, it doesn't seem that, it seems like there's arguments.
How are the parklets going to affect?
I was about to ask that, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that the restaurants that have parklets would be using their parklets for the.
But they will be paying the fee to the Ferry Fest that they usually pay.
Well, and you're going to need to read this twenty-page thing. You're just going to have, you're going to have to bite down and do it, because it goes, it goes into all that kind of stuff. It, I mean, the, this, one of the big questions is, is this a village event? In terms of the Incorporated Village of Dobbs Story, or is this a community event? We've always treated this more as a block party. And what that means is we have to get permission from everybody in the village, people have talked about having the chief and the DPW on the committee. To me, putting him on the committee says we all have equal voices, I don't think my voice is equal to Rick's. I don't think my voice is equal to Steve's or Jen's, they are the ones who know how to get this stuff done. They have to, we have to go to them with hat in hand, saying, would it be okay if we did this? So I think having them be much more powerful than another member of the committee is better. We've worked really well with all of them in all the previous years. You know, I think Jen, I think you'd feel comfortable that you guys get to tell us exactly what we have to do, and that's, that's the way it is. And Chief Rick, he's been phenomenal, he understands how to make this safe for the community. And those are, that's what I really thought you were going to be talking about more tonight, is this too soon? You know.
We allow this, and, you know, the big events at Waterfront Park are going to be back, and, you know, a new, a new world post-COVID. And, you know, do we want that, we've already had a request for, you know, over a thousand people at Waterfront Park, that we kind of held off. Because it was probably in March or April, and we weren't really sure where the vaccine and everything was going, and we're obviously at a different time. Now, so it definitely needs to be part of our.
You know, are, do we feel comfortable that we're post? That's, that's the big question, if people feel that it's, it's, it could be done safely, then it's a good thing to do, because it's beneficial for so many reasons. Original purpose of this, again, in the twenty-page thing, is it was really to bring fun and activity to the village.
See, I think we should do it, and if people don't feel comfortable with, with attending, they don't attend.
That's right, I mean, Yankee Stadium is open in full capacity, has been for over a month now. And so I think.
If I'm going to go to a Giants game, I can't, I can't sweat the festa.
People are doing that, yeah, I mean, so I, I, I think it's.
I think that the only discussion is the day that we should select. You guys have done this years and years, I don't think that there is nothing to change, other than viewing it from the point of view of post-COVID. And you guys, I guess, as a committee, will come up with some of the regulations that you feel according to the health regulations that you should follow. And you guys, I guess, as a committee, will come up with some of the regulations that you feel according to the health regulations that you should follow.
Concerned about doing fireworks, because, you know, there'd be too many people. At the riverfront, I'm not sure, because I'm not following it, like, are there a lot of these things going on? Are we gonna attract, like, we normally get, I think, fifteen thousand people. At Ferry Fest, I mean, are we gonna attract more? Is the chief still on? Maybe he could opine on whether he has concerns about that, but, you know, I was very in favor of fireworks. And we didn't do it because of the concern of overcrowdedness, and we have the same concern with Ferry Fest, so.
Is the chief?
He is.
It's like, it's like a TV show.
Hold on, chief, I have to pin you, hold on.
I guess that is three months after. A lot of companies are looking to go back to work in September, so by October. Our safety.
If this were August, it might be a little.
Chief, what do you think about the event? And what do you think about, if you're okay with it, what do you think about a Saturday or a Sunday?
I don't think the, uh, day itself really affects, uh, the police department itself. Um, I do. Uh, historically, we have the Ferry Fest set up. We actually started notifying, um, Westsia County DPS for, uh, the use of their auxiliaries, uh, this month. Um, that's how far in advance we are trying to prepare. So, um, you know, I. I have no issues, you know, if we are going forward, I just, you know, this is where I, we, we normally prepare for this very fest. A few months back, historically, in the short term, I've been chief, um, you know, Patty and the other stakeholders that have been working to coordinate. You know, memory serves correct, we really start going back, looking, uh, back into maybe March, was it Patty? That we really start meeting together to, like, really discuss very fast, so, you know.
We used, we used to do it. We used to do it like a whole bunch, and we, I think the last two years, um. I think everybody, you guys particularly, had it down so well. I don't think, I think our first meeting last year was a June meeting for about half an hour. Village hall, and then we did one more meeting. I mean, you, you understand how to do this perfectly. And it's, you know, you, you, unless we introduce something new, which I don't think we'd want to try in this year. I think, uh, we already know the drill. The main thing is, I mean, I have, I have gotten already inquiries about, uh. You know, vendors and stuff like that. People have contacted us and asked us if there's gonna be a Ferry Fest this year, so. The, the real test, I think, is if we're gonna get the signups. That we need to generate the cost to offset this, to make it a non-taxpayer event.
So just so we're clear though, chief, you're, from a safety and health perspective, you're, you have no objections to this event?
No, we're, yeah, we're trending well. Um, I, I don't have any issues. I just need to be able to have the time to plan. Uh, which, when I look back with the fourth, that was the other thing too, was planning was, was a little bit short. Um, like I said, if, if this is gonna be a go, I'll be reaching out to Westsia County, um, to see if I can reserve there. The sheriff's, uh, forced to assist us like we've always used, to supplement the, the officers we have. And, um, you know, we can set up our incident action plan, uh, for that date.
All right, well, we can, I guess, also, if the, if numbers do become very high, and we, we decided it's dangerous, we could always cancel it. But how much time do you need? Do we have to set a date today, or?
I think you should set a date, and we should circle to be ready to go full-fledged at your August meeting. But what I would do, and anyone else who wants to help with it, we would start doing the things, like putting the updated, uh, form online. Uh, sending blasts out, and we can include something this year that reserves the right for the village to be tracking, um, COVID. And to, if they need to make an emergency decision that says, we're not, you know, we are canceling, you know, we'll do that.
Okay, so let's see if we get the temperature of the board here. So Mike, you prefer Saturday?
Yeah, in absence of any, uh, real hard information from businesses, like a survey, then yes.
Okay, Donna?
Yeah, it's, it's been traditional, it's warped.
Okay, so, uh, October second?
Uh, mayor, I just wanna say Liz, um, corresponded with the school district and the homecoming is scheduled to be held. Either Friday, October first, or Saturday, October second.
The ninth, then?
Last Columbus Day weekend, maybe September twenty-fifth works, and it doesn't co- coincide with any Jewish holidays this year.
Is that too late?
I, I, I mean, whatever you guys decide, that's what we'll target on it, and make that work. We did do a Columbus weekend one year, and it worked out okay, but, you know, there, there's probably more competition for things that we can.
Weddings are completely booked, the whole entire county for, I don't want residents going to weddings, something else, not having the residents that we want. That's a very hot day for weddings, and this.
Which one, the second?
Um, October, the weekend of October, Columbus Day weekend.
That next one.
Yeah, so I don't, you know, like, if anybody's attending a wedding or any type of event, considering that everything is open. Might not be the most ideal weekend for us to host.
What are our options, though?
Well, I mean, the homecoming is. I actually think it works fairly well, because you've got everybody all, you know, psyched up and. You know, I don't know that that's a conflict. The only, actually, this goes back to Rick. Um, he might not have had this experience yet. Um, one of the concerns we had was, when you have the festa and you have the football, you're splitting your, uh, force.
Rick, how do you feel about that?
I personally think we're better off just doing it on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the, um, I prefer not to potentially split the department. I would like to focus on, hang on. Yeah, I would, uh, I prefer to be able to just concentrate on one event, if possible.
Okay, so we'll do the twenty-first to September twenty. All right, thank you, Rick. Okay, Patty, I'll be. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Alyssa, make sure they all get their copy.
I will, I will. It was, it came this afternoon, twenty pages. I didn't.
Not a rate anything less than five pages.
Discussion item number two is a discussion of Play Street and block party applications, so we did get an application for a Play Street. On Bellwood Avenue from Ashford to Walgro from two to five PM on Sunday, July eighteenth. Okay, that's a Sunday. Uh, okay, so, do we have to, we have to approve that?
So that was one of the questions, uh, we wanted to ask. Uh, we were talking about this internally. You've gotten a couple of requests for street closures, um, and we were talking with the clerk and whatnot, and we were wondering. If in fact you did not want these to be handled as a, the same, uh, mode as a block party. And then it could be handled internally, rather than bringing them, each one back here.
What's the difference between us reviewing a block party versus a play party? Because it's really just, do you want to close the street from this intersection to that intersection? Aren't they the same type of request?
I mean, fundamentally, I mean, it's used a little differently. I think one is used more by maybe neighbors than, um. More immediate neighbors, whereas one brings kids and families from outside of the neighborhood. But the premise is pretty much identical, basically blocking off the, each end of the street. And making sure that there's responsible parties to make sure that people that have to get in and out do get in and out, and the people are kept safe. So because it's fundamentally the same, we thought it'd be easier if we just handled it through the clerk's office as an application for a block party.
I would think so.
Are block parties being handled? We're not voting on those anymore?
I think we took that away, right?
I'm fine with that, I just wasn't sure we did that. Liz?
There, um. Most, i- if the block party was like, um, uh, a larger block party or something, it would be brought before the board, but. It's just like the, you know, a small. Black party, there's, there's no need for it to go before the board, so.
Like fifty or less, or fifty or more?
Well, I mean, if, if, you know, there, there were some people who were having just like, you know, um, a food truck for five families. But then there's some that wanna have, uh, you know, if they wanna have jumpy castles and bands or something, you know, this is something. A little more intense, so.
I think we should formalize that somehow or other, okay? So, my sense of it is, I don't think we have to be involved in any of that. I mean, they're fundamentally.
So we understand that. We know there's an application pending.
No, there's an application that people submit for block parties to list, already, so it could be the same for Play Street.
Right, that's fine, I think it should be. And then the villagers' staff can approve it in conjunction with police department, and VPW, that kind of thing.
So, if that's okay, that's the way we'll handle them going forward. Meanwhile, we have this one before you this evening, so if you want to look at it, otherwise, we'll just review them.
So I guess I have to make, is there a motion to approve this request? Trustee DeRozan, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor? It's, it's approved. Okay, so let's move to the resolutions. Um, there, we're gonna, um, ask for, to table resolution number one. We need some additional information, uh, so that would come off the agenda for tonight. We've already done number two. Actually, item number three, two then, I guess, will be resolution authorizing submission of a CFA grant. Application for High Street Park upgrades. And I know that you've given us today, I think, right, the dollars and cents on the Ha- High Park upgrades?
Valerie is actually on to speak to this, but.
Okay, put her on.
Valerie, can you hear us? And Suzanne and Lynn as well.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, a loud, Jen, is there a way to lower it a little bit?
Okay, so welcome, and maybe you can provide information to us, Valerie?
Um, I think Suzanne is also on the, or Susan Nolan is also on the phone as well. She actually was assisting with the development of the actual cost estimates. Actually, the revised cost estimates, they were based upon two thousand and fourteen, uh, bid documents that, uh, the village sent out. And, uh, Sue was taking a look at upgrading or updating those particular cost estimates. And she actually had some additional information to provide to the board to get you a better sense of what's probably needed at that site. So Alyssa, I don't know if you can find her. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to, um, to her right now. And have her kind of walk the board through the, uh, budget that she sent over, and then we can talk about the grant. And then ultimately, the board's decision whether to continue pursuing this grant or not.
All right, hi, can you hear me? So, um, so, uh, the pricing is based on the cost, uh, the scope of work from two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the project had actually been bid back in two thousand and fourteen, and, um, it was bid in two separate, um, sections. And it had, it came in, I think, over the, the estimate. And, uh, part of the work was done, the tree clearing was done. And so basically, the, this scope of work is, you know, reinvigorating that original scope work from two thousand and fourteen with some. Um, um, you know, um. A little bit of, you know, tweaking and, and, you know, being more specific, I think, about what the landscape will be. But, um, you know, it's really, the assumption is that the stairs would be rehabilitated. That, that has remained completely the same. Um, and basically, the, um, and the pricing is based on the, the bid, um, prices that, you know, came in. Adjusted for, um, inflation over these seven years.
So just so we're clear on this, the, uh, total price now would be four hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, correct?
Based, yeah, based on, um, what came in in two thousand and fourteen, adjusted for current prices. That is a fair, um, estimate.
And our, our contribution would have to be fifty percent of that, correct?
Well, I think that, um, what is being requested now are, are the construction funds. So, I mean, Valerie, you can, um, correct me on that, but I believe that the, um, board would be, um. Acting on the construction costs.
Right, so, that's correct, it'd be the three hundred and sixty-four thousand.
And our responsibilities have.
The grant would be one eighty-two, three eighteen.
Thank you.
That's correct.
And.
But ultimately, ultimately, the board will need to clearly undertake the design and the construction management would have to be part of the project.
Which is all us, right?
Sorry.
That will be all us, right? That will be on, that extra fifty-one thousand dollars would be coming straight from us, correct?
That's correct.
And, and I think, um, maybe Suzanne can speak to the fact that there are certain areas of the pricing that didn't have a two thousand and fourteen estimate. Because it's that much later now with the overgrowth. So you have to essentially start over with removing trees that have had a chance to grow up. That weren't necessarily present in two thousand and fifteen, when you originally estimated. I, I believe that's my understanding. If, if, if I'm wrong, you should correct me.
No, you, you're absolutely right. So, um, you know, tree removals were done, but, um, invasive. You know, control and management wasn't continued, so now there's, instead of this kind of shady, um, Norway maple forest. Now there's, um, a, you know, full-blown saplings all over of black locusts that like the sun. So there, there is some, um, you know, it, the site moved forward, but then it took a couple steps back with regard to the invasive species. So that will, that's, you know, something that needs to be, uh, addressed also, and is in the, the estimate.
Okay, so how does the board feel about it?
Isn't that something that our GPW or Parks Department could do some on, so that the cost is a little bit less, a lot more money?
You mean the site cleaning?
The, the tree overgrowth or whatever they're talking about.
Well, I think some of it is, um, you know, it involves, you know, land clearing and a chipper, and it's hard to access. I think ongoing, once a, um, stable landscape is established. I think at that point, um, DPW, um, might be able to do some of the ongoing maintenance. But right now, it's, it's a, you know, very dynamic, you know, overgrowth that is probably pretty hard for, um, DPW to handle.
I think we need to know that the DPW can do it after, otherwise we're investing money, fixing, and then we can't maintain it again.
That's, because that's what happened. We invested money in, 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 into this initially, and then it wasn't kept up, and now it's costing us. Same thing again, I mean, even more.
And, uh, Valerie, is it a dollar match, or can you match with, uh, you know, in-kind services? So if, for example, the DPW could do some of the land clearing, would that be, go toward the village's match, or is it a dollar match?
I believe in in-kind services can be provided. Um, I don't have the grant, um, information in front of me right now. I'm, I apologize, I'm in the car driving from another meeting, so I can follow up with the board on that tomorrow. But I do believe in kind services are allowed.
So I don't want to volunteer anyone. Discuss this with the Conservation Advisory Board, and a number of their members, uh, have, uh, expressed interest in. In volunteering time, services, uh, and the like. Uh, I'm also happy to, um, chip in, uh, but I, I think that we can look at all that. I think we should, we should get an answer about that, and then. You know, if that, if that brought our, the, we're, we're stuck with the design and construction costs, and we're gonna be in for something, because repair of those stairs are just gonna be expensive. Um, but perhaps some of the, you know, sort of, more, less intense work could be undertaken by volunteers or DPW.
What's the deadline for this? When do we have to make a decision? When does it have to be submitted? July twenty-sixth, is it, uh, Valerie?
Uh, yes, it's, it's actually at the end of July, yes. So, I, I don't know if there's a way that the resolution could read not to exceed. Maybe that gives a little bit of wiggle room, so that if for some reason we can't do some in-kind services and reduce the costs.
So we're currently, as per your request, we're currently working on a ten-year capital plan. For, uh, investments and capital needs of the village, which would include the renovation of this parkland. We're expecting to get a report from Honeywell by this Friday. We're gonna have a sit-down meeting with them in terms of the capital projects that they recommend. I think that you have to, I mean, Jeff, uh, the board would have to identify a source of funds for whatever goes into this project, whether it's a hundred thousand or a hundred and eighty. And I have to say that, I had a really good conversation with Suzanne last week. I, I had no idea that the numbers were gonna come in like this, and they just came in either today or yesterday, so it was hard to, uh.
So it was hard to uh to navigate them. You know, I I would really like to see if there was any kind of a, kind of a, maybe a smaller project. Um, I know this is an area that's very much in need, but you have huge capital potentials in this village, including finishing up the work at Gould Park, et cetera. And um, you know, uh I think it would be great to, obviously, you guys have done a bunch of work on it before. The fundamental ma, the problem with a lot of municipalities, not not unique to Dobbs Ferry, is you have to maintain this. And that was the problem when I talked to Suzanne, just what I think Nicole was saying and um you know, it wasn't maintained. You can't do these projects and then not maintain them because you throw money out the window. So if we could possibly come up with something that would be a smaller project that would allow uh, you know, perhaps access through the stairs and a sitting park or something a little more passive that didn't cost four hundred thousand dollars, you know, you might just consider that. And I think it's very hard to commandeer DPW and volunteers, no matter how, you know, goodwill they are. So I just caution. Right, and timeframe-wise, how would we come up? Well, I think Valerie should go to the grant and look first to see if in-kind services even qualify. And then make sure that in-kind services that are not paid, maybe volunteer that qualify. And meanwhile, maybe we can look at a little bit of a scaled-down project. I mean, to put four hundred thousand dollars into this property is a lot of money. How do you figure, you're gonna have to have at least fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in maintenance every year. You're not gonna be able to maintain that. Right, but the decision has to be made by July twenty-sixth. How are we gonna approach that? Well, I mean, these, you know, to bring these grants forward for a resolution, I don't think you even did that before. So we've been trying to create a good record for you all. Um, you know, uh, you can either approve it subject to, or you can wait and just not approve it by resolution and, you know, we can get a consensus later.
Or you might be able to call a special meeting of the board just to get a form to to make a vote. So that's clearly acceptable as well, since it'll be a single item agenda. Liz and I could handle the special meeting notice as required. Um, it it does seem like you have a number of conditions, so it's not an easy conditioned upon one item. It looks like it's a really a a decision-making process.
The problem is we have to be here in person now to do that, but, okay, we can do that. So let's table this and get more information and we can then move forward one way or another, or a smaller scale project. Is that? I shouldn't even speak. Is that okay with everybody?
I mean, great, you could do it because it could be a great resource, but that's a lot of money right now, all the other issues that we have.
Yeah, and you could hold a special meeting on a Saturday or Sunday, even when people are available to just come and take up the issue to vote.
Mike, what are you thinking?
It's the the CFA grant, and and I apologize, I think we discussed this at the previous meeting, but this is something that was sort of just identified very recently and uh, and this it's it's due at the end of the month. And is this, is this a yearly thing? Is this a?
CFA, yes. But the Valerie, the the criteria changes every year, or would this be available next year?
I believe it will be. Um, these, this grant that we, or the the um the funds that have been identified for this particular project uh do appear every year. So it is something that you could also consider, um, you know, looking at a little bit more carefully over the next year, come up with a little bit more scaled-back design and then potentially uh go for grants again the following year.
That's right. So the original, uh, after I met with the CAB about the site a few months ago, uh, along with Ed Manley from Building Department, and we talked a little bit about how, what we thought was a potential, and and Miss Nolan, um, a potential path forward to develop the site. And and one of the suggestions by Miss Nolan was that we, that the design of this park include uh, you know, sort of very low maintenance type of plantings and and type of design. And so part of, part of our process was to work on a design that was in part viable through volunteers and in part only could be done by a construction company, and for example, stairs or some of the larger tree removals. Um, and and look at a sort of phasing of that. And I wonder if, with a little more careful design process, so maybe we looked to Miss Nolan to do the design component. Um, now, or in the next few months, we work with her and the CAB to try to tailor that, uh, so that some of the work can be done. And then we look maybe next year to apply for this grant for the portion that we know, where we have hard, you know, bids and we really know what we're talking about.
Okay, so you're suggesting tabling it totally until next year?
I am, but I I'm also open to to, if Miss Menastrum, Miss Nolan have other uh comments about that.
So I think, right, we were really, when the CFAs came out, we identified projects that have been contemplated before in the past, or you already have some design work um have completed and would be eligible for the CFAs. I think it makes sense, since, you know, the last design, you know, was done in two thousand and fourteen. And I know one of the things that has been raised is that the design work or the bid documents do not include looking at those stairs or doing much restoration to the stairs, and that has been another six or seven years. So it might be um worth also taking a look at the stairs again, just to make sure that those are indeed um, you know, um, completely adequate and do not need any upgrades beyond what was identified in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Well, we could decide that the other grants that we have coming up like Gould Park, we'd rather put the money towards High Street Park. I mean, that's also something, right? I mean, it looks like so, Maureen, what do you think?
I I do agree that is um a little bit of a um costly um for the times. I I would love to see a design with a lower scale and see what we are able to accomplish on a smaller scale.
Okay, Nicole?
I agree, and if there's a way for us to internally or with volunteers work on the what do they call it, in increased vegetation or whatever, we should do that to make it a nicer park in the meantime.
So you're, so you're okay putting it over for next year, but in the meantime doing work and, or do you want to work on getting a smaller project for this?
Well, can we put in for all these CFA grants, or are we choosing?
CFA is just the the repository for all the available funding. So this this particular source of funding is the Environmental Protection Fund Grants Program, Parks Preservation and Heritage. Those funds are available every year repeatedly. So you're asking for for two programs under that particular pot of money, and then you're also asking for um a a separate pot of money. But it's a single application. A number of years ago, they consolidated into a consolidating funding application for all of the available funding.
I'm I'm open to having something smaller this year. I think we keep kicking things down the road and and just need to finish things.
But whatever we do, it has to be something that it does not overgrow the way that historically that site has overgrown. Um, a few years back, there was a forty-three thousand dollar investment that was done cleaning that site and look at it now. So what can be done that it will be more permanent, that we will not have this constant problem that goes back?
I think what had, if I could um just say about the money that was spent on tree removal, I think that back in the day, the tree removal was done, assuming that then the project would move forward, but I don't think it did. And um, so the problem is you just can't remove the trees and not put something else back. Um, because basically, you know, the void was filled by the invasives that liked the sunny site rather than the shady site that had been there. So the idea moving forward is that this site will always need some kind of management. It's just that what goes in has to match what kind of inputs and management the village will be capable of moving forward. And so the idea is to have a stable landscape as possible that um needs as little input as possible in the future. It will need intensive inputs at the beginning.
I mean, my sense is that we should do it properly, and if it means putting it over till next year to get a final full um view of what would be appropriate. And then if from there, maybe we could do that's not possible, then to do another version of it, we at least would have a whole, we would have spent time researching it and doing the work on it. So that's the way I feel about it, so. So what are we all saying? Put it over? All right, we'll take it back and with the next year. I just feel too rushed. It's like in three, two weeks.
Yeah.
We don't even have documents, we don't have bids, we don't have documents of what we want there. I think it's just, it's too it's unfortunate that we didn't have a little more time to to plan for this for the grant applications to do, but it seems to me that who knows with those stairs, what's happening in seven years. Maybe there, maybe it's not one eighty-five, it's three, rate a quarter to build a mid, I I don't.
My understanding was that they had gone and looked at it before they gave us this quote, no?
No, this is, this is a, this is the quote that was previously given in two thousand and fourteen, adjusted for inflation. Five percent rate per year. So this is not a rebid. This is not, no one has gone out and looked at this, no one, you know, we just took the numbers.
Well, no, it does say the concrete stairs and handrail continue to be in a condition that can be repaired and restored.
Yeah, but that's the assumption.
Ah.
Right, so those are assumptions.
I don't think, I don't think we can in good faith.
At the time, we weren't sure.
Well, I don't think we can in good faith commit funds, that's why.
Okay, thank you. We're just gonna then withdraw that one and move it for next year.
But I I would like, but you know, would be, we should, we should look at, you know, the design component. And, you know, I don't know how we, maybe that's for, that's not this agenda item, but I would like to get that on the agenda uh soon, and then we can think about this seriously and plan for.
Pay for it, yeah. Okay. All right, so let's move to action item number four is the resolution authorizing submission of a CFA grant application for the installation of a basketball court and lights at Gould Park. Um, those numbers, I'm assuming, are still valid, the.
Yes.
Okay, so the basketball court total would be three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Our share would be one hundred and fifty-seven one twenty-four. So um, I know we've looked at this, we've discussed it, so are we better to move forward on this and authorize this application?
We discussed the new basketball court and lights?
I thought we did.
Probably just discussed the stairs and the landscape.
Yeah. Andrew told us a little bit about the project, but just.
Yeah.
She's here.
Yeah, I don't recall.
Yeah, the CDBG um project is the stairs and the pathway.
I know, but I don't recall. Yes. There's probably another four-hour meeting.
I'm still a little hour or so ago.
Yeah.
I can, yes.
Andrew, can you just give us a little background on the grant application?
For the basketball court?
Yeah.
Um, this one was new to me. We talked about it at the last meeting. Um, we had talked about putting it in um to refurbish the existing court because it's not level, and then the possible, the possibility of possibly switching it because of the north-south light and that it's not ideal for um basketball games.
One of the lights. Sorry, go ahead.
And then we wanted to update the lighting because they're not LED lights. Um, so we wanted to kind of make them more efficient in the process.
Jeff, is our matching fund something that comes out of the rec fund? Is there money there for that, or is it something else?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure what's, oh, sorry, Jeff.
Sorry, I was asking Jeff.
I'd have to take a look at the rec fund where we're at. Um, yeah, there's, there's other ways to get it on the, you know, uh, fund balance.
All right, so.
I don't know. Rich, you mentioned that we may have a lot of other expenses to incur, and this seems to me Well, we do. I mean, you know, that's, I was just saying in the context of some, the uh proposals that just came in like that. So, but I mean, this is, this is further work on your park. I mean, this.
That basketball court is used a lot.
Yeah, and I think that's, it's a work on a park that's, you know, you've put a lot into. It's it's a pretty, pretty nice park right now, actually. So you don't have, as I understand, you don't have any monies in the rec fund right now. You may be getting more. For now, you would have to take it out of fund balance. That's the only source of funds, or you can bond it, but, you know, we're not really ready to go for a big bonding project. Usually you put them all together. So probably, uh, if you identify this, you would take it out of um your fund balance, and the monies are available. And this would finish the park, really, we would have then. It'll finish this aspect of.
If we get the CDBG grant.
Andrew's always got great ideas for that part. So finish is a relative term.
It's a filter here, a campus.
Okay, I don't, so if we're, is there a motion to move this forward? You know, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Next, God bless you. The next one is a submission of a CVA, CFA grants application for the Dobbs Ferry Comprehensive Plan. And that would cost one hundred and seventy-five thousand, and our match, that would be one hundred thousand? Valerie's here to speak to that as well. Okay, Valerie.
Yes, so the match for this particular grant application, they don't allow, you can only go up to about ninety percent of your total costs. Um, and they, and so I was suggesting at this point that the state actually likes to see a higher match, especially with these, these, this particular grant program. So I was suggesting that, you know, one hundred and seventy-five thousand um, and that the village match with the, I believe it's seventy-five thousand, and then the hundred thousand dollars for the grant.
Uh, no, this is written that the match is a hundred.
Right.
Should it be seventy-five?
I, yes.
So it says, um, submit an application for seventy-five with a match of a hundred. It should be the opposite.
Wait, so one hundred and seventy-five, mine says one seventy-five for the plan. And then we do.
It says it.
Now, that, no, really, the way you have it written is correct. I apologize.
So you're gonna apply for grant funding of seventy-five, and you're gonna, you're gonna guarantee, you're gonna commit to provide a hundred.
Yes.
As a match.
But this provides a um, a grant to do a, like a review of our entire comprehensive plan?
That is correct. It's based upon the initial scope that the board sent out
Right, but we sent, we sent that out kind of as like a catch-all, but I think and Vinnie or Donna could probably correct me if I'm wrong. It was more like we wanted to focus on looking at the downtown uh part of the comprehensive plan to make sure that it was being used in line with our zoning code because it seemed like there were a lot of projects coming in. And some of the boards didn't think there was enough teeth in the comprehensive plan to use it as a basis to reject projects or not, but we were more concerned, I think, with the five areas. And the EI zone, so not the full you know, it could be a limited part of the plan, because it seems like a lot of money for something that we we did ten or eleven years ago. It's not that old. I mean, it's old, it's not that old of a plan.
So your, your actual proposal that went out looked at a couple of different scenarios. It looked at, could you take the initial, uh, the current comprehensive plan and only update it? And it also looked at taking, and once you do the analysis, if for some reason you needed a whole entire comprehensive plan, how much would that cost? So this grant right now is assuming a new comprehensive plan along with some of the additional studies that you were, and analyses that you were looking at as part of that overall scope, which included some economic development analyses, um, traffic analyses, parking analyses, et cetera. That being said, depending upon what the actual grant provides, you can change and modify the scope as needed. The grant will be written in a very generalized scope, but the cost estimates that I provided this board were based upon the actual responses you received on the proposal, assuming the full uh comprehensive plan rewrite. So it it is less, it's a, the cost estimate is less of a conservative, I mean, well, actually, it's a very conservative cost estimate because this is assuming the complete rewrite of comprehensive plan along with all the other, and all the additional analyses that you identified back in two thousand and twenty.
Right, but what if we only wanted to do part of that, like look at the comprehensive plan as a concern to downtown and the EI, wouldn't it be significantly less?
It would. That's correct.
And what do we want to just put in? Because if we get this grant, do we have to use all the, max a hundred thousand? Are you saying we could get the grant money and say what we want is only fifty thousand, they would give us twenty-five or, and we would get twenty-five or something like that?
That's correct. You can, you can revise scopes with the the state. You just can never ask for more money. You can always ask for less money.
That's fine. Yeah, that works.
Okay, so is there a motion to uh submit this grant application? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Mayor, could I suggest we skip the agenda item nine?
Yes, I was gonna do that. It gave me the evil eye, I feel it, so. Do that. It's giving me the evil eye. I feel it, so.
They didn't come at six P M.
So let's skip, let's skip down to the resolution for emergency expenditure for repairs to the tower, loud ladder truck. Work to be performed by Firematic Supply Company. Come on up. Tell us why we have to do this. What happened?
Well, I'll give you a picture.
Uh, our routine service with our mechanics that gets on every year, we sent him to be qualified in our new fleet because we got a bunch of pierces. Uh, while doing it, he noticed that it was hydraulic fluid on the bottom and it's been for quite a bit. He sent me pictures. He said it's gotta go to where we got the truck in Patterson, New York. When they inspected it, they said the actual extension pistons, which put the ladder up to, in the air, a hundred and ten feet, is, they're leaking. So the only way to do any kind of work like that is take the whole truck apart. We had to get a crane rental. They had to take all of it out. You'll see in that one picture, the three pistons laying on the ground. All three pistons are leaking.
Wow.
This truck is two years old. However, the truck committee at the time, they went with a refurb on the boom in the ladder to save money. And we basically brought our pistons and ladder onto the new chest. So Firematic, uh, Pierce, I should say, did redo the fittings, redid the hoses, redid everything up to that point, but it's still a thirty-year-old piece of metal piston. That internally, as of right now, the only price I have right now is ninety-six hundred dollars for the crane rental and the labor to remove all those parts. Now, as of right now, they went to the cylinder shop that they deal with on a flatbed Friday morning. So I don't believe they got worked on yet. Before any work is done, they need to look inside each piston. Because one of them, you know, maybe A, B, and C is wrong, maybe just A, B is wrong, whatever it is, and then they can give me an updated estimate on the price. They're thinking anywhere between two and seven thousand dollars a piston. So we're already around ten thousand, like I just said, the two to seven thousand. We don't know where we lay with that. And then the crane to get back and to put it back together. This is something beyond our control. I'm already down this truck. Last week, that Thursday storm, we ran seventeen calls in two and a half hours.
Wow.
We called Ardsley, Hastings, and Irvington to come help us. We have the other engine downstairs that is in and out of service. It's over twenty years old. That needs to be replaced and that goes in and out of service as well. As of right now, I'm down half a fleet. I have two engines that we could rely on that get out the door. One of them's our spare, which only holds half the amount of manpower, half the amount of equipment. We're making do with what we have based on that. I'm calling all the other towns, you know, they don't have a problem coming to us. But we really shouldn't be relying on the other towns when we have our own equipment. So, like I said, it was just basically, I need to wait for them to examine everything internally so I can get back what a price for you guys.
If it's, if it's thirty years old, I mean, isn't it more cost effective to invest in new pistons?
Yes and no. The problem is with the aerial scope brand that the old tower ladder was that we have, they're out of business. So for them.
From two thousand nineteen?
I'm sorry?
The one from two thousand nineteen?
No, 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 the original one.
Aerial scope ninety-one and it was refurbished, so. Being that it came off a ninety-one truck and went on to two thousand nineteen body, they can't just replace those aerial scope pistons. So they gotta, they take them out and recondition them. There's no way to get a new one.
So basically what they're doing is putting all Pierce parts into the older pistons, which, like I said, we tried to save three hundred thousand dollars when we got the truck instead of spending one point three on the ladder. It was nine hundred ninety-eight thousand. We tried to save that money there, but now that aerial scope is out of business and Pierce is the only one able to work on this truck because if anybody else touches it, avoids any other warranty and, you know, anything else that we have left. But because we came with our, basically our own equipment, we're responsible for that. Like I said, you see in the pictures, the hoses are branded.
I understand the emergency. I'm not questioning the veracity of the pictures or what you're saying. I'm just thinking long-term, it seems like this is a Band-Aid on a problem that can keep happening.
It's very possible. I mean, this is the main.
I'm figuring out a long-term solution to, since they have a two thousand nineteen truck with a third.
I mean, the only thing you really, we could do at that point is say, okay, throw it out. Give us what you guys wanted to begin with. And then you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar project and who knows how long that truck gotta be out of service. I don't believe the place in Patterson, New York can even do that. The truck was actually manufactured in Wisconsin. We went out there to, you know, examine it, do the whole spec, right? You remember all that. That would have to be on them and that's something that we would have to talk. If that's a possibility and that's the way you guys want to go, I mean, that's something I could get in touch with Firematic and see the route, but. I mean, as of right now, if we're looking at a thirty, forty thousand dollar repair, maybe to get us through the life of this truck, I mean, like we said, the ladder, the bucket, the boom, the turntable, everything that we came with, it's already twenty something years old.
What's the life of the truck?
Life is twenty. But that's with the new chassis, all the new equipment that we have, that's twenty years old, but we, like I said, to save money, took the ladder, turntable, all that stuff up, down on a new truck.
I know, I've been trying to figure out what the life of that stuff is, like.
Yeah, that's, it's hit or miss. Like I said, you know, there's people that, there's a lot of refurb. And we went out there, there was about ten departments that had their ladders, just like us on the ground, they refurbished. It's just the luck of the draw.
Okay, but can I authorize this without having a specific?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask. So you, you're estimating right now that you've, you've already spent ten and that was for the rental of the crane and the.
For the crane and removal of the piston.
Okay, and now it's being assessed?
Yes.
And in worst case scenario, it'll be seven per piston. How many are we talking about?
Three, so twenty-one thousand on top of that and then labor to get the crane back and to reinstall them in the truck.
That's probably.
So probably, I would say another, you're probably looking about forty thousand per day.
And I'm doing.
Like I said, I mean, it's something.
Okay, so, so you can say a not to exceed amount and that will give them go ahead to get at least the ten K and the possible twenty-one K. And then if they need to go higher, they can return.
Right.
After the fact to amend this.
But is it always with Firematic? Everything?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Because they're the manufacturers of the truck. They're on state contract as well. They're, because of the manufacturers of the truck, we have no choice but to use somebody who's certified on that because any other thing that they touch, it could void a warranty or anything like that.
Right.
And Jeff, would that be acceptable if they did a not to exceed forty on an emergency basis and then, and then, you know, you gentlemen will know?
Right.
In the next couple of weeks.
I actually spoke to him this afternoon. I called him, I reminded him tonight was our board meeting. Said, do you have anything else? He goes, I don't. He goes, they went out Friday morning. He goes, the cylinder shop didn't call him, you know, on the weekend, who's gonna really work? He goes, I could tell you right now, you're at ninety-six, labor, crane. That's it. He goes, the minute he finds something out, because each, like I said, each piston is between two and seven. One might be two, one might be five, one might be seven.
We'll just estimate all three at seven. And we'll say not to exceed forty and then when you gentlemen have a better idea, if it's gonna exceed, you can, you know, then this can be.
Yeah, the minute I find information out, I will pass it along to.
Okay.
The mayor administrator.
So is there a motion to authorize the interim village administrator to enter into a contract with Firematic Supply Company on an emergency basis to repair the village's tower ladder truck not to exceed forty thousand dollars? Trustee Patino, second trustee Cassell, all in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
All right, resolution appointing Ali Manning as a, as youth service librarian, one for seventeen hours per week and hourly rate of twenty-six thousand fifty cents. Is there a motion? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee DeRazi, all in favor? That passes unanimously. A resolution for emergency expenditure of the purchase and installation of a new variable frequency drive at the Gould Park Pool in the sum of two thousand one hundred eighty dollars from the Roberto Pool Services. I don't know if Andrew's still on wine. Andrew?
Do we need an explanation of this one?
Andrew, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
So, so something broke that wasn't supposed to break?
Correct, and we need to repair it. And there's only one place we can get it from and it's through Roberto and the piece itself is coming from Pentair who makes it. So that's why it's an emergency purchase because we don't have three prices for it.
And is any of this under warranty? Because this is all last year.
Uh, no, it expired like a month or two before, so that's why they were like allowing us to purchase it at like a discounted rate. Because usually it costs like three times as much as we're paying for it.
Are we getting a warranty for this?
Uh, yes, there's a two-year warranty on it.
All right, is there a motion to authorize?
There was a less than two-year warranty on the first time.
No, it was two, it was two years. It was purchased back two years ago.
Two years to the purchase date, not the installation date?
Correct.
We didn't even use it probably for the first year.
Nope.
Didn't use it last year either.
Correct, very, very.
It was more, I don't know, early, maybe, I don't know.
No, a two thousand dollar part, you know what it would cost you to argue a defect.
Motion made by trustee Sullivan, second trustee DeRazi, all in favor? Passes unanimously. It seems that these things shouldn't be breaking down so quickly. Um. Richard, this is for the library. You have some.
Has the librarians here this evening.
Okay.
So this is basically sort of chronic problems that come up with the compressors and the condensers there. Basically, three out of the four failed and we're looking for a long-term solution, but in the meanwhile, you know, the library needs air conditioning in order to function during the summer. So Elizabeth, I'll turn it over to you.
So what we believe happened is those two ninety-degree days back in the beginning of June, I don't even know the dates of them. K V S came out and the temperature inside the sound barrier was a hundred and twenty-five degrees. And the come denser units are just not, he, he said basically not even ones that are made to be in Arizona can withstand that kind of temperature.
Liz, we just need to know though, is this the price that, for, for now, because I know that there's a whole design issue, what we're gonna do in the future? But is this the price, twenty-seven thousand or something else come in that was lower?
Something came in that was lower today.
Okay.
Um, and I had asked for, when I, when I had asked for the, the quotes, I'd asked them to get them to me as soon as possible. It's hard because this is the, the absolute high season, so I don't wanna, you know, I'm not throwing the other guys under the bus. They just got it to us when they could. Their bid was twenty-three eight seventy-five, I think, the, the second bid that came in today. It does not include removing the north and south walls of the enclosure, which is one of the things that the engineer highly recommended doing because the, the sound enclosure is part of the problem, is that it's keeping the hot air in there.
So the twenty-seven thousand dollar bid that we have does include that?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we should go forward.
It's not apples to apples.
So we're okay with approving this, Laurelly? Okay, all right.
As long as Jeff is good.
Okay, so is there a motion authorizing the emergency expenditure for the H V A C repair of the Dobbs Ferry Public Library, work to be performed by K and S H V A C for the sum of twenty-seven thousand? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Patino, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Try to stay cool in there, I guess. Thank you. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a used garbage truck from the village of Ardsley in the sum of eight thousand dollars. We do have a memo from Jennifer Dorman explaining the situation. I guess we're buying Ardsley surplus.
Yes.
Buying garbage surplus from Ardsley, okay.
Yes.
But you explain it, it's the only, it seems to be a viable option for us, so is there a motion to authorize this expenditure? Eight thousand dollars.
I mean, you just spent twenty-seven thousand.
Well, just so I can put it for the public's benefit, there is a, a garbage truck that the village of Ardsley declared a surplus. It still works and we're going to purchase it from the village of Ardsley in the amount of eight thousand dollars. It's a garbage truck that collects garbage and will also be able to pick up.
Well, right now, our only spare that we have can only pick up brush.
Right, right.
So we want to get rid of that one, auction it off and use the garbage truck from Ardsley to do everything any other garbage truck can do, not just pick up brush.
Right, hopefully the auction item will offset some of the eight thousand.
Yeah, and also we're replacing one of the parts from our, it needed a new piston, so we're taking the part from our old garbage truck that we're gonna auction off and put it in the garbage truck from Ardsley, so we don't have to.
We just had a problem with pistons.
But we're solving problems with pistons.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize this purchase for eight thousand dollars? Trustee DeRazi, second trustee Tino, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Is, we have a resolution authorizing the interim village administrator to sign a one-year renewal of the Impact Records Management System Service Agreement with Central Square in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents, effective August first, twenty twenty-one. In support of that, we have a memo from the chief dated July sixth, twenty twenty-one detailing why this contract is necessary and justifying the increase in price. Are any questions regarding this? Is there a motion to authorize this? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Cassell, all in favor? That passes unanimously. We have to schedule, or the question is, should we schedule a public hearing on August tenth, twenty twenty-one to consider amendments to the Village Code, Chapter fifty-five, Section two, regarding the library board terms of office? We have a memo from the Dobbs Ferry Public Library Board of Trustees dated June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one explaining why they believe the bylaws of the library should be amended to reflect a length of time that a person serves on a library board. Uh, this only has to be done via, on Board of Trustees and we have to have a public hearing to address that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on August tenth, twenty twenty-one at six-thirty or as soon thereafter as possible? Trustee DeRazi, second trustee Sullivan, all in favor?
You have a proposed look-along package, so we'll make sure that that's available for the public too.
Yeah, they've just been having trouble getting candidates for the position because of the term.
Comment about the length of time for the trustees for the village, maybe we should.
Two years, not high.
We should extend that.
Oh, fine, I should swap it.
I can, I can draft it that way if you want.
Is there, there's a resolution to approve the audit of claims that submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? This is, Jeff, this is the usual, nothing unusual. Okay. Is there a motion? Trustee Sullivan, second trustee Tino, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
I just asked, I was looking back over the correspondence from the cannabis stuff, Florley, that somebody had asked a question that we didn't ask earlier. Um, is there a way for Dobbs Ferry to implement local law ordinances that increases the fines for underage individuals possessing or using cannabis products?
That's actually a state law, so there's a way that you could lobby the state legislature to do that, but that's in the penal code, so we don't have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Well, that reminds me that I should do this, I should acknowledge the receipt of a correspondence regarding the cannabis legalization from Paul Friedman dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And I also should acknowledge correspondence received from Peggy and Larry Bizard to the Board of Trustees dated July twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So we have acknowledged, we see the those and they are part of our record. I also want to acknowledge an email from Elaine Trader dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one in support of allowing cannabis shops in the village. Okay. Minutes, is there a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one? Is everybody here? Everybody looks, okay. Trustee Sullivan, trustee DeRazi, all in favor? That's adopted. Tree Commission, who's on that? I know that we have gotten the agendas for the tree commission, the trees that should be removed. H R B? That's Christie also. Planning Board, July first?
Yeah, the only thing that might be of interest to the general public is one fifty-six Palisade, does have a new architect. does have a new architect and they are submitting new plans and this discussion about the formal housing unit, which we have not settled, which I will talk with, the, the formal housing task force is going to be looking at that as well.
Okay.
There has been no official submission from them about their request, so I don't know if we should start or not, Laurie can tell me.
If, if they're going to request a waiver, that needs to come back here for a public hearing before it proceeds.
Right, but yeah, we haven't received anything, or anything from them, it was just mentioned at the planning board meeting.
Great, we'll wait for an official request.
Youth Services?
Well, I was going to announce the Youth Services Council Coordinator position, but it's been paused, which Rachel will probably fill me in later. We do have summer movie nights back. This year appears to be that it's gonna be in Gold Park and not the waterfront. And it starts on July sixteenth at eight forty-five. When you blank it?
I'm trying to think of the movies.
Scooby?
Scooby, I saw it.
You know that we feature one every, I mean, it's funny, because this fire didn't have all of the movies that we are going to feature, so surprised, stay tuned.
Okay, anybody else want to put on any of the other ad hoc committees?
Just the senior advocacy committee, they're gearing up for the opening of the senior center. They're working on some really exciting programs and the committee could use more members, so please, if you're all interested, we'd great to have new people with some new input. And you do not have to be a senior to be on the advocacy committee, just need to have interest in the senior programs.
What's going on with the furniture? Did we get the furniture?
We just ordered it the last. Several weeks.
We just, we just ordered it, so it's a few weeks.
You guys have a better memory than me, okay. Anything else?
The Human Rights and Diversity Committee will have a meeting on Monday, July.
Anybody have any announcements to make?
I want it quieter.
Is it?
Most of the plates are up, but I think it would be, be useful for neighbors, I mean, really everyone to have an update from Con Ed, maybe include in the next newsletter or something.
So Alyssa and I have spoken about that because I have gotten a lot of emails from people and they were complaining about lack of updates on that project, but it is a Con Edison project. We really don't have any control over when it can be done. And I know we have been in contact with Con Ed on a regular basis, correct?
Yes, we have, and I think the D P W is as well.
Yes.
Trying to get a final schedule that we can share with the public.
Okay, so we will try to put something in the newsletter. Every time the newsletter goes out, something about it, because I know it must be it's worse than frustrating and I understand that, so. And I did tell, in, in the emails, I did say there were three trustees who live either on Ashford or right off Ashford.
Riding front.
So you guys feel their pain. So I did put that in my emails to the public, that you guys are living it as well, so.
Living it, but not loving. Yeah.
I will say that they're very, they're accommodating. I did ask them to remove the plates and put in, you know, fill it, so it would be a little less noisy. They did do that. I mean, they're very nice crew. The, the, the officers that are out there, I just are working incredibly hard. They're there in the pouring rain and in the ninety-five degree heat and so if you're, if you're a neighbor, bring them a nice tea, say thank you. Hopefully it'll be done soon.
I don't have my gavel anymore. What happened to that?
You're using it too often.
Yeah, is there a motion to close the meeting? Trustee Sullivan, trust, second trustee DeRazi, all in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Meeting is closed. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.